And go ahead.
All right, looks like we're live. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 16th, 2022 Planning Commission Regular Video Meeting. It is currently 6:02 PM and the Planning Commission is now in session. My name is Daniel Hubbell. I am the Planning Commission Chair. Tonight's virtual Planning Commission meeting is being brought to you using video conferencing technology by Zoom. The Zoom video of this meeting is being broadcast live if you're watching it that way, and it will also be uploaded to the city's YouTube channel at the conclusion of the evening. Deputy Director, Deputy CPD Director, I always forget the CPD, Director Allison Van Gorp and other staff members are participating in tonight's meeting remotely as well. Public audience members who are listening to the meeting by telephone or using the Zoom video teleconferencing application, we'd like to welcome you all for joining us this evening. Commissioners, if you wouldn't mind, please having your microphones turned on and I will have Senior Administrative Assistant Lori conduct a roll call. Lori?
Yes. So for roll call, Commissioner Boatsman.
Present.
Commissioner Friedman.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Chair Hubbell.
Present.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Reese.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have all of our current six sitting commissioners present and accounted for. As I mentioned tonight, we'll continue using Zoom for our meeting. As always, I will do my best to recognize you in the order that your hands have been raised. If you can, please try to use the electronic hand, and if I am not recognizing you, please feel free to just make some motion on the screen and sometimes that will catch my attention. Our first item of business this evening is public appearances, and this is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission on any item not related to the two public hearings that we have this evening, which we will be calling for separately. So for our public comment section, Lori, is there anyone that's been signed up for general appearances?
No, there's no one signed up for public appearances.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We will skip past all of the rules of engagement there and we will move to the next item on the agenda, which will, so the way we're going to do this is we're going to conduct, we have two public hearings this evening related to ZTR 21-006 and ZTR 21-004. We will conduct both of those public hearings and then we will move to regular business where we will approve the minutes and then move into the deliberation and discussion of the other items that we have. So with that, I would now like to move and open the public hearing for ZTR 21-006 related to permit types and noticing. Lori, is there anyone who has signed up for a public comment related to this item?
No, there's no one signed up to speak.
Excellent. Well, having no public comment, I am going to now officially close the hearing for ZTR 21-006 as it relates to permit types and noticing. We opened that hearing at 6:06 and have closed it at 6:07. Great. That brings us to our second public hearing of the evening related to ZTR 21-004 related to the town center commercial requirements. I do understand we have several comments. Are people signed up and ready to provide comment here? So I will remind those who are here for that. First, I will open the public hearing and remind individuals making public comment on this item that we will call you by name or telephone number when it is your turn to speak. During your public testimony, please speak audibly. State your name for the record and we will be giving you three minutes this evening for your comments. So with that, the public hearing is now open. It is still 6:07. Lori, would you like to go to the first the first member of the public?
Yes, Mr. Kenneth Katsaroff. And I see you here. I'm going to promote you, Mr. Katsaroff. And now you should be able to turn on your video and unmute yourself.
If it's all right with this commission, I prefer if Ms. Tubin Tenley goes first and I could go second.
I have no problem with that, Lori, if that's okay for you.
Yes, sure. Let me promote.
I'll just mute myself for the moment if that's okay.
Yes. Ms. Tobin, you've been promoted. You may turn on your video and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you. Welcome.
Good. Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Tenley Tobin and I'm a retired architect and I'm also the trustee of the Allison Family Trust, which owns the Alandia Center located on 70th and 30th. As trustee of our family asset, it is my duty to preserve and protect the value of our property. However, our family has no intention to sell or redevelop our property now or in the near future, as our elderly aunt's livelihood depends on the income. This property was owned by my family since 1947, when my grandmother purchased the land and bought a country house. In 1964, my grandmother demolished her house and built a commercial building with two large tenants. The square footage on the Alandia Center is 23,700 square feet. However, there's only approximately 200 lineal feet of storefront. The footprint of the building was originally designed for two large tenants, which explains the necessity for the 100-foot depth. Retenning has been a significant challenge in renting spaces with deep bowling alley configurations. Typical small tenants require roughly 2,000 to 3,000 square feet in today's market. The majority of tenants are looking for a depth of approximately 40 to 50 feet. Our building has 100-foot depths. The proposed changes to the ordinance would force any future redevelopment on our property to replicate a functionally obsolete building. If the known outlaws provision was applied, the redevelopment project would require 14 tenant spaces, twice the number of tenants in our current building. This is physically impossible to build. Our property site is an L shape with very little street frontage in proportion to the site. Retailers and small businesses will not rent spaces that don't have street visibility. With the known outlaws provision, we would be forced to provide 23,700 square feet of commercial space. This is not feasible in this configuration for this amount of commercial square footage on our site in a mixed-use project. The commercial spaces in the southeast corner of the site with no windows or street visibility would not be feasible. This creates an impossibility for redevelopment. As an architect, I have applied the code revisions to a preliminary feasibility study and have concluded that a mixed-use building could not be designed that would comply with the proposed changes to the ordinance. In addition, the maximum 60 lineal feet of street frontage would eliminate any possibility of a larger tenant. The bottom line is the proposed provisions and restrictions imposed on future development of our property will create an impossibility to meet the commercial code requirements. The known outlaws provision, if enacted, prohibits a mixed-use project on our site and economically destroys any future development. It will catastrophically reduce the value of our property. Therefore, the Alandia Center will never be redeveloped and the now 58-year-old building will remain without the possibility to enrich and enliven the town center with a new redeveloped property that is aesthetically well-designed and meets the needs of a growing community. Our family has deep roots on Mercer Island dating back 75 years. When I became the trustee and manager of our property 20 years ago, it was always my goal to value the needs and desires of the Mercer Island community by prioritizing the right mix of tenants in our center. I have always managed our property with the philosophy of a partnership between landlord and tenant. Similarly, I believe the city council and city planners should partner with the landowners in a collaborative effort to determine what is the best vision for the town center and the best means to achieve these goals. I recognize the importance of sensitivity to aesthetic design, community needs and desires, but within the parameters of the Growth Management Act, a vibrant town center should be the goal for Mercer Island, not vacancies and properties that were forced into building commercial spaces that are impossible to realistically lease out or even build. The FAR and the known outlaws methodology, as applies to the zoning codes in a town center, is unusual and unproven. The CAI report uses data that is questionable regarding its accuracy on taxable retail revenue and unrealistic cap rates. The Planning Commission and City Council should analyze any reports through a critical lens. In the January 26th Planning Commission meeting, there was a discussion on the desire to eliminate all future residential development in the town center and only allow single-story buildings of selected use. The population of Mercer Island is projected to grow according to the CAI report and the mandates in the Growth Management Act. Where will the growth occur? Mercer Island residents have expressed their clear desire to not allow any multifamily in mature single-family neighborhoods, nor to allow the expansion of the town center borders. Compliance with the Growth Management Act will never be achieved under the proposed changes, which cripples new development with unreasonable encumbrances. Conversely, mixed-use redevelopment within the town center will create housing that will attract a much more vibrant and diverse community. I received my only notification from the city of Mercer Island on January 24th. Many meetings and public input opportunities came and went without my awareness or knowledge. There were public input meetings in the past where no individuals attended or spoke. This is a clear demonstration of a lack of outreach to the community and the appropriate parties. I am requesting the Planning Commission extend the timeline of this process. The Planning Commission and City Council need enough time to thoroughly deliberate and not push through a decision that may not meet the GMA requirements nor be legal. It is a mistake to pass ordinances that are unachievable, as is the case with the Alandia property. The Mercer Island community is important to our family. We have been conscientious stewards of this property for decades. On behalf of the Allison family, I am asking the Planning Commission and City Council to remove the known outlaws provision in the ordinance. If these changes are passed, it would effectively eliminate the possibility of any future redevelopment of our property. In addition, we request an extension of the timeframe for all affected parties in this process and to encourage greater input from all property owners. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming to address us this evening.
Thank you.
And we already have Ken added in. So Ken, why don't we go to you next?
Great. Sorry. For the record, Ken Katsaroff, 1425th Avenue, Suite 3400, Seattle, Washington. I'm going to apologize in advance. I've been sick this week and I'm only just now getting back on my feet. So if I cough or have to pause, please give me a little bit of grace.
No worries. Thank you for saying something.
I'll try to keep my comments fairly brief. We submitted one letter as part of your packet that you should have received on Friday, which really outlined a lot of our concerns. We submitted an additional letter on Monday, which deals with the SEPA determination or DNS that was issued on February 14th after the last date that could have comments reach your packet. So I understand that that letter has also been forwarded to you. So I'm not planning to parrot those letters tonight. But I must say that I'm fairly concerned with this proposal as well as the process to date. It's pretty rare for me in the land use world to come in and and, you know, kind of shake things about. I typically love to work with local governments, but many of these requirements in this ordinance seem, quite frankly, to be a little arbitrary and half-baked. They render a lot of existing buildings and uses non-conforming. And for example, it's kind of unclear as to why the uses that are allowed under this ordinance are so different than those that are currently reflected in the town center. I mean, it's odd that the proposal didn't include banks, for example. It's clear to me that the ordinance is really being rushed and it's being rushed for no clear reason. I would say that this is even reflected in staff's comments. The staff report reflects language that there were clearly unintentionally omitted sections when drafting. So I think that Ms. Tobin's request is quite frankly reasonable. This entire process needs to slow down and this commission should be gathering a lot more community feedback before this ordinance is passed that so greatly impacts this area. Clear that the intent is to really downzone this area, and I think Ms. Tobin really did a good job of talking about the devastating consequences to property owners. In her instance, her aunt relies upon the income that is produced in this property, and I know that she's not alone in that. Excuse me one second. Seems to me that this proposal is really trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. A little bit unclear as to the genesis, and that's where I'm going to have to turn to be a little bit more negative or a little bit pointed right now. I'm still trying to get up to speed on this, and again, I'm trying to get back on my feet after being sick, but it seems to me that there's been some real significant concerns reflected in the record so far and in our comments and letters about the genesis of this ordinance, the procedures so far, and the actual perceived conflicts of interest that may exist. For example, on procedure, again, the SEPA determination checklist issuance issued the DNS just two days ago. And quite frankly, it's completely inadequate and doesn't address impacts of the proposal. Unclear how the public could provide any comments to this commission before the deadline of the packet, whether determination wasn't even issued until Monday or be here to speak. Second, it appears, and this is where I feel kind of quite bad, but it appears that there's at least one member of this commission that may have a conflict of interest. I understand that there were some statements at the January meeting that the conflict had been quote cleared, but the city has an entire Code of Ethics chapter, Chapter 2.6, for this process. And as far as I have been made aware, that process has not been followed. I'd also note that the Planning Commission revised, updated and approved new bylaws on January 26th of this year. And under Section 6.1 of those bylaws, even a perceived conflict of interest requires that a commissioner recuse themselves from the meeting and discussion and action on a particular topic. So under those bylaws, that process should occur tonight. Today, I also have to make this commission aware that we filed a number of public records requests related to this exact issue. And depending on what is disclosed, we may have to file a formal ethics complaint. So given all of that new information as well as the comments we've submitted and the comments from Tenley this evening, we think it's there's kind of a clear cloud on the appearance of fairness of this ordinance. We requested this commission do one of two things. First, hopefully pause, slow this thing down. And second, if not that, vote no on recommending this to the city council if it chooses to move this forward. So I will stop there. I know that my time is short and I very much appreciate your attention this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ken. Yeah, we're definitely over time, but wanted to make sure that we included your comment. So thank you and I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Lori, if we want to, let's see, we can drop them and go to our use, I think you said there are a few other folks.
Yes, next is Ms. Tracy Grandbois. Let me promote her just a moment, please.
But you're still on mute, Tracy, but we can see you.
Hi, sorry. This is Tracy Grandbois. I'm in my car parked on my way to pick up my daughter. So thank you for your patience. My name is Tracy Grandbois. I live at 8440 Southeast 82nd Street. I would like to thank all of the commissioners for your time and effort. I know that it is sometimes a thankless job. I sent my comments earlier. I just wanted to kind of reiterate that as a property owner, I received notice and Sarah Bluebus had reached out, but none of the tenants whom I serve were asked for their input. And I think they are also stakeholders and I am not only a property owner, but I'm a resident. And as a resident, I did not receive any notice or any offers to give input. And I think that we want buy-in from everybody. I'm not sure if you guys remember the big town center stakeholder process from a few years ago, but I was a member of that 42-person committee. And yes, I don't think we want to go there, but I think we, I think this process should involve more members of our community. And I guess I would really like to know, I think we should all be on the same page of what we're trying to solve or what our goal is. From my perspective, it seemed like this moratorium was put into place right around the sale or right around when the farmer's building was considering their redevelopment and there was some concern about loss of retail. I don't know if that's what everyone, if everyone's on the same page about that. And I guess if loss of retail is the biggest concern, as I mentioned in my comments, it seems odd that we would be allowing museums, art facilities, theaters that would be open at night when all the retail is closed and closed during the day when all the retail is open. So I will leave the rest of my time to the comments that I sent to you. I'm happy to discuss with any of the members. And again, thank you for your time.
Tracy, it's great to see you. Thank you for joining us in the middle of picking up your kids and coming again.
Right. One final kind of comment is that we kind of dodged a bullet with House Bill, sorry, I have it written down, 1782, although working at the legislature for two sessions, no bill is really ever dead. So as a community, I think that we should, you know, be vigilant so that we can maintain local control because otherwise this meeting will be moot because the state would be telling us what we need to have within half mile of the transportation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Let's see, Lori, was there anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Goldbach. Mr. Goldbach, we see you as a panelist. You may unmute and share your video.
Hello, Commissioners.
Mr. Matthew Goldbach, good to see you again.
Good to see you, and I'm going to be incredibly brief, which is unusual.
That's not allowed.
What I was, I sent you folks a little packet of documents. It's already been discussed, I think, which is the DNS. I was really surprised to see that in the CPD packet on Monday. And I, I went through it and I found a number of things that just didn't seem to make sense with the current situation, which is to say it's not baked yet. And the DNS is supposedly enacted in 14 days from February 14th. And there's nothing scheduled between now and then. So I don't imagine things are going to be resolved. And there's also a lack of, on the DNS, it doesn't seem to be, or they claim there's no way to appeal or discuss it. But I know you guys can discuss it. So I'm just going to turn it over to you. I noticed it wasn't in your packet. So I sent a copy over and I guess you guys are now aware of it in any case. So that's all I'm doing as a good citizen.
Great. Thank you. And I can confirm that we received that part of the meeting this afternoon. So.
Hmm, okay.
Great. If that's, is that all you have?
That's it. That's what you have for me.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it and we will look forward to seeing you again sometime. Lori, do we have anyone else?
No, Chair, that's, that's all the speakers we have signed up.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much. And we will go ahead then and move forward with the rest of our business. Matt, I think while Lori is taking you off, there you go. I will go ahead and close, hearing no more comment. I will close the public hearing for ZTR 21-004. It is now 6:28 PM. The hearing is now closed. That takes us to item number three, which is the beginning of our regular business and our first item under regular business is the review and approval of the minutes from January 26th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments or changes related to the minutes from January 26th? All right, hearing none. Lori, would you like to call a quick roll call vote on approval of the minutes?
Sure. So for approval of the minutes, Commissioner Boatsman. I. Commissioner Friedman.
I.
Commissioner Goodman.
You were on mute, Tiffin.
Hi.
Chair Hubbell.
I.
Vice Chair Murphy.
I.
Commissioner Reese.
I.
Thank you very much. The minutes have been approved, a six to zero. That will take us to item number four, which is ZTR 21-006. This is related to permit types and noticing. I believe in our packet. Oh, first I should ask, do we, Allison, I don't know who is leading this, Adam, I see you came off a video. Is there any presentation from staff before we take a motion and conversation around this?
I do have a presentation prepared, yes.
Excellent. Well, let's move into that first and then we will move to the next phase.
Okay. Share my screen. So you can see that now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, this is on ZTR 2106, which is the land use review types. We'll be looking today to get your recommendation on ZTR 2106. The staff report provided three alternatives for you to consider for this, for this matter. The first is to amend Mercer Island City Code 1915030 as you proposed, kind of as one of your alternatives on December 15th. Alternative B is a programmatic solution. So adding, this would add some information about building permit records to our weekly bulletin and then also some information about how to access a potential web map. This was one of the alternatives that we talked about on December 15th as well. And then obviously there's a third option of taking no action. So just as a refresher, ZTR 2106 was brought forward as part of the 2020 docket process, submitted as a docket request. And it was added to our work program by the City Council. And it was added to our work program by the city council at that time. And the initial direction from the planning commission and our first touch on this was on December fifteenth of last year. And the staff recommendation was provided in a memo dated February eleventh. Hopefully you've had a chance to read through that. The SEPA determination for this, we issued a SEPA determination of non-significance on January nineteenth. The comment period on that SEPA determination was January nineteenth to February second. And we received no comments on the determination of non-significance. Just as a, a little more background. So again, this was a proposal to increase the land use review types for certain land use review actions. The code establishes four different land use review types and each of those corresponds to. An amount of. The amount of review and the amount of public notice that each of those actions gets. So the first type is a type one, which is an administrative review. And that's really just based on those non-discretionary standards. So the city has less kind of leeway and how those. In, in issuing those decisions. And for a type one, no public notices required. For type two applications, it's still an administrative review that's largely non-discretionary. But there is some public notice required in that those applications, notice of application is published in. The weekly permit bulletin that CPD puts out. Then for type three. This is, there's a little more discretion involved in a type three decision. And there's a lot more process involved with it. So for type three decisions, there's a pre-application meeting required. A letter of completion within twenty eight days of the application, a notice of application posted on site. Thirty day public comment period and a notice of decision. And then finally, the type four is kind of the most, the highest level of review, the highest level of public notice required. And the, these also require a hearing examiner or design commission review prior to decision. So those are the, those are the four permit types and the, the application had proposed changing. Several permit or land use review actions, the types for each of those. When we looked at that on December fifteenth, we talked about the, the different ones, the different. Proposed land use review actions for change. And at that meeting, the planning commission proposed that we increase the type. For seasonal development limitation waivers and final short plats from a type one to a type two. The other land use review actions were proposed for no additional change. And an example of the code amendment that would be required for this was provided with the staff report in attachment A. So again, the seasonal development limitation waivers are. Are, are an administrative review that, that allows some work to be conducted in kind of the off season or the rainy season. And then final short plats are after, after we've issued a preliminary short plat, once an applicant has kind of completed all of the. All of the necessary. Or complied with all of their conditions of approval, then we, we file that final short plat. So both of those under alternative A would move from a type one where there's no notice required to a type two getting published in the weekly bulletin. Now, alternative B was proposed at that. At that meeting on the fifteenth as well. And it's like, maybe, maybe this is an option to supplement. Making a change to the code, or it may just satisfy the requirement or satisfy the, the need. In and of itself. And this is a programmatic approach. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily need to change the code in order to enact alternative B. And what this would do is add information on how to search our existing electronic permit, permit records to our weekly bulletin. And so that would get some of the information out about, you know, this is where you can find information if you're looking for it. And then it also would, we also have put together a permanent map that would help the, the public kind of search geographically. To see what, what development activities are happening in their neighborhood. So I'll walk you through kind of the, those, those two components of alternative B. So first with the, the online permit search instructions, this would be added to the, to the weekly bulletin so that. You could see kind of how to, would basically get the information out there on how to search what we already have available. And basically it just walks through, the instructions would walk through, you know, putting in the, the search terms in the fields from, you can't see my cursor. But on mybuildingpermit.com so that the, the public can see how to, how to work through that. And then I think the one helpful thing too with this is when you do. When you do a search on mybuildingpermit.com, you can also pull a export, an Excel spreadsheet that. Shows you all of the permits of a certain type that you might search there. And you're also able to search by the date that it was applied for. So that, that really answers some of the, the questions about like, I, I see development happening in my. Neighborhood or I want to see all tree permits issued or applied for in the last two weeks. Where can I see that? Then the next piece for alternative B, which I think is actually a really, this is a really great tool that we've been working on with our GIS staff. This is an online, this would be an online, online permit map that would show all. Current active permits throughout the city. So when you're, when you're looking at the map here, all of these, these colored dots represent different permits. And different, the different colors correspond to different permit types. One thing that's really helpful about this is that you can search, you could zoom into just your neighborhood and see what's happening in your neighborhood. Or if you saw something on the south end of the island, when you drove by, you could go check that out there. But it also has a filter, filter option where you can filter it down to just see. Tree permits issued between a certain range or applied for within a certain range of dates. So the example here is in a neighborhood kind of in northeast Mercer Island, looking just at tree permits. So you can see it gets filtered down to just the green dots, which are the tree permits. And then you're able to click on those dots, those individual dots to see more information about the permit itself. So this is one of those permits that was in the neighborhood that I was just showing. You can see then there's the permit number, its status, the, the corresponding address, what the, what it is. And then also when they applied for it. And so then that gives you all the information you need to kind of find out more information about that. And one of the, one of the strengths of this is that it's all pulling from our existing electronic records. And so there's less. Once we get the map kind of configured, there's less regular upkeep of the data. It's just automatically pulling from our database and, and creating the map. And then again, alternative C is a no, no action alternative. You're not required to make any changes to. This section of the code if you don't want. And. The only, the only outcome there is that the, the review type wouldn't change for any of the land use review actions. So the staff recommendation is to go with alternative B, the programmatic solution. The combination of the web map and the mybuildingpermit.com search instructions are really effective for getting, getting this information out. I think it, it'll help folks understand kind of the, the tools that we already have available. And then also make another tool that would be really helpful, the, the web map, make that available as well. It also, I think, is a pretty effective way of getting this information out to the public. So you can see what permits were applied for. In a given date range or in, in a given neighborhood. But it would do this again without adding to our review time for any of the permits or any of the, the resources that we've committed to reviewing permits. And I, I think just to drive that home too, I mean, this is really leveraging kind of what we already have. To increase public access and, and address the concern that was raised in the docket application. While also not adding to, adding significant time to the staff workload. So those are the three alternatives for you to consider tonight. We'd like to get your recommendation for the council on this. And then we plan on having the first reading with the council. Next month in March, and then hopefully moving towards a final decision in April or possibly May. At that point, I turn it over to any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Adam. Yeah, considering we had the, especially the solution B stuff, we haven't had a chance to ask questions about. I know we had sort of directed staff to think about possible solutions here. So before we take any. Motions, does anybody have any questions that they have for the staff around the solutions that they've presented for item B? I'll start with Vice Chair Murphy and then go to Commissioner Boatsman.
Okay. So. So Adam, as I understand, the difference between a type one and type two permit. Is that with the type two permit, it then shows up on the weekly bulletin, correct?
Yes.
But there's no actual notice, individualized notice to neighbors.
Correct.
Now, am I correct? Well, let me just tell you, my experience with the. Mybuildingpermit.com is that you can get information on that as far as the status goes. But there are no hyperlinks to the actual permit documents. Is that? You agree with that?
Not, so they, you may not be able to see like the actual application form, but it would give you the information you need to kind of. To pursue that information further, excuse me. Most of the. Most of the information that is in the permit bulletin would also be available there. It just may not have the, the hyperlink to the actual permit application itself.
That, that's my point. And in the permit, the weekly bulletin, you do have the hyperlinks. And so if you're interested in a project. That shows up on the bulletin, you can easily jump to. The actual documents that show you what the project is about, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But your new map, which would be linked to the my building permit. Would not give you that feature. You would have to. Kind of figure out what that project is and then somehow navigate through the, and frankly, I don't know how you would do it. To access those documents to actually get any real information about the project, wouldn't you?
If you wanted to see the application, you would probably need to contact city staff at that point. But you would then have, you would then know that the activity that you saw in your neighborhood was permitted. And you would know the permit number, which would be really helpful for kind of following up on that information.
But, but there would be no immediate hyperlink for someone, you know, sitting in their home or office. To actually look at the documents.
Correct.
Okay. Seems like that's a, a real benefit. To notice, especially because there, because there's no individualized notice.
Uh, okay. Is that, is that all, Mike?
I believe that's, that's all.
Great. Carolyn, do you have a question?
Yeah. Um, yeah, it's, um, I can see the benefit of the hyperlinks, but I guess in this particular case. We need to consider how important it is to have the hyperlinks for the various particular things that Dan is suggesting. And how important would that be and valuable to, to island residents? I have a few questions about the system itself. Why is there the same colored dot with the same? Type of permit listed four times or three times or whatever, if you know what I mean, like electrical, mechanical. Right away, sir, that would be on the, the web, the web map.
So that's just, uh, this was a prototype. It's not quite like cleaned up for, for public use, but.
Okay.
I mean, essentially it's just that there's, uh, the data records. So the map is generated from like a spreadsheet essentially. And that spreadsheet for some of those rows, they have like similar names, but so they show up more than once in.
Oh, no problem. It's just, it just regard if it's just a glitch at this point. Are you able to type in an address in this system?
You could search by address.
Okay. And do I understand that you need to use both tools to check out something? Or you can just do one or the other?
You could do one or the other.
Okay. Um, and do I understand that everything that Mr. Thompson wanted to move? To a different type is searchable in this, this system?
Correct, yeah.
All right.
That's one of the, one of the cool things about that web map is that it's, it's all of the active permits that we have. So it's every permit type.
Okay. Well, you know, I kind of feel like the, the bulletin is not very useful in a lot of ways. Especially for these smaller things. Because for example, let's say I go outside and I see somebody tearing into what I thought was a critical area with. You know, some machinery and it's winter and I'm thinking, hey, is that allowed? And I want to go in and I look if I. Even if that was in the bulletin, well, what if that person applied for that permit three weeks ago? You know, it's, it's not going to be in the bulletin that I look at for that week. I mean, you know, it seems rather useless to go searching back through a bunch of bulletins, looking for something that I don't even know what the title of it is. Going on down the street. So much as I, you know, agreed with moving the seasonal development waiver. From a type one to a type two. And I really don't even think it's that useful. And I, I wonder how long this bulletin is going to be. Uh, well, maybe for some of the more elaborate proposals, it's well worth it. But. Um, considering that, that, you know, some of these things we were talking about moving are not that. Frequent or earth shaking. I feel like this tool you're proposing seems kind of good, but. Thanks. You've answered my questions about it and confirmed that I think you're saying that the date that. The permit was applied for, it's only going to be in one bulletin and I wouldn't know what bulletin is in. Is that correct?
Yes.
If I was looking.
Yeah, it goes in the bulletin once.
Okay, thank you.
Jordan, questions?
Uh, well, first I had the same reaction that Mike did about that window of data of information that comes up when you. Click on a specific permit application. So Adam, I would just echo Commissioner Murphy's, Vice Chair Murphy, excuse me. His, uh, his feature request that was implied in his statement, which is that. It's a, it's just kind of a no brainer, right? Like you should be able to drill in unless, unless it's technically. Impossible with the current tech, you know, current system. So it would be great to be able to click on that and go to the next level of detail of, about the permit. I'm also trying to understand is, are, it doesn't seem like options A and B are mutually exclusive.
That is correct.
Right?
Okay, we could amend the code and, and take it and do the other part too.
Because the tool's great, right? I mean, even if you weren't able to double click, it is, it's better than nothing by a long shot. So. I would say, you know, not that it's really in our purview, I guess, but I, you know, I would say go with the, go build the tool. It looks great. But I'm also trying to remember from our previous conversation about. Upgrading these, these permit types. What is, what is the staff's reluctance? Why, why is the, why is the staff trying to avoid? Option B, which is to change or no, sorry, I'm getting them confused. Option A, I guess, right? Option A, what, what is, what is the reluctance? Cause it seems pretty minor.
Well, it's, it's really the, I mean, it's not. Limiting it to seasonal development limitation waivers and final short plats is, is an improvement. Because it's not, we don't see a ton of those every year. But for something like tree permits, that was really problematic with the amount of work that, that was. That that really translated to. And so it's not necessarily a reluctance to alternative A as much as a. Alternative B is, is a, a better solution in, in my opinion.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Um, Victor, questions?
So.
So I guess my question piles on to Jordan's question, which is if A and B are not mutually exclusive, why aren't they being proposed as an option? And one other follow-up question to what you just said. You provide a little bit more detail in terms of the work involved with option A. Like what is it that takes so much time?
Well, it's, so for every entry into the permit bulletin, that is staff time putting together that entry into the permit bulletin. So for something that we get three applications for a year, like a seasonal development limitation waiver, that's, that's less of an impact. But when you start talking about like tree permits, where we get like a hundred of those a year, that's, that's a little bit more of a commitment of resources.
And, and so when you say a commitment of resources and it's entering it into the system, how much entry work is involved? What exactly is the information that you're entering into the system?
It, it's putting together that two pages of, of information that goes into the permit bulletin. It takes about 10 minutes, 10 or 15 minutes per entry. And yeah, that was, that was summarized in the December staff report too.
So is that it, Victor?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, Carolyn?
While I was studying this issue today or yesterday, I found a section in the code that's about these permit types that says that in type two, you cannot put something that's already been issued. So I think I may have stumbled across something that basically makes it impossible to put trees, for example, in type two, because a tree permit is something you walk up to the counter, you apply for and you get it and you walk out the door with it. And I'm not sure if seasonal development waivers are the same way. But it also calls into question our decision or our recommendation last time that we thought that a final short plat should be a type two. I didn't think that made sense on second examination because one, a final short plat, you know, you put that in type two, that's not a notice of a permit having been applied for. It's just a notice of a decision and type two is really not the place to put notices of decision. However, a short plat being a type three permit type already had an opportunity for people to comment and, and notice was sent out to, I think, within three, 300 feet of proposal. And if people are parties of record in that situation, they get a follow-up as a party of record. Am I correct in that? Okay, so am I reading it correctly that we cannot? Well, I guess I would have to ask you seasonal development waiver, is that a walk up to the counter permit? Or is that an application that pens for a while?
It, it's an application that pens for a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it might seem to me, I mean, I'm thinking, you know, passing an ordinance is a little bit of work. Is if final short plat doesn't make the cut, is it worth passing an ordinance to get the seasonal development waiver put from a type one to a type two? When there's what, three per year, did you say approximately?
Something like that, yeah.
Searchable in the, the web tool. So I'm just kind of thinking that our idea for an ordinance, it doesn't get I think it's a lot, a lot of effort for something which might end up being rather very, very, very small.
Uh, Mike, I see you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I just want to comment, respond to Carolyn, is that a final short part is an application process based on my experience. So it's like a, you know, the seasonal development permit and the final short plat, both are a process, not a decision. They end up in a decision, but there is a process.
Okay, so trying to keep it to questions at this point for staff, any other questions? And I just have one quick one, if nobody else has anything left. Carolyn, you have your hand. Are you going to make a comment to Mike or do you have another?
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Adam, could you follow up on what Mike said about the final short plat being an application? I, I didn't understand that. Kind of looking for some clarification there.
Well, so, I mean, it, it is, there just isn't really like a review process beyond like, did they satisfy the requirements of the preliminary short plat? So it, part of the reluctance on like putting out like, uh, we didn't necessarily want to open like a comment period on those things because there isn't really much influence that a public comment could have on the process.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Adam, my only question is, I think this is great, the work that you did with the the folks at what G, whoever put the IGS, to put these maps together. In the same vein, I'm assuming there's probably a little bit of effort and time involved in this. I'm assuming, you know, we're making a recommendation to the council and the council is going to have to make some sort of a assessment on whether or not they want to. Ultimately, what we're asking them to do is invest a little bit of time and money, I'm assuming into solution B. As, as a way to, from a process perspective mitigate and frankly, probably create just another better service overall versus just the, what was recommended to us. So I just want to clarify that ultimately what we're doing is we're asking the council to just invest the time and effort and potentially dollars into developing this into a full-fledged system.
Yes, we, we want the, the thumbs up from planning commission that this is a, a good way to resolve the issue that was raised.
Yeah, and did the, and did the city IT team, and I see your, your, your hand, Jeff, oh, not to ignore you. Was there a timeframe that they, like if they got the green light from from council, was there a timeframe that they might have in mind where they might be able to fit this work into their plan? And how long might that take?
It sounded like that might be a couple of months to get all of the features kind of built out where it was easily usable. But I, I think the web, the prototype that we had was pretty close. So maybe this spring, I would think.
Okay, so it's more what I would consider shorter term versus longer term in that regard. Great. Jeff, you have your hand.
Real quick, thank you, Chair. Actually, the moment may have passed, but I wanted to add a little bit more color to Adam's response about the final short plat and what takes notice. What, what transpires when we receive such a request? A preliminary short plat, which does get public noticing, is before anything happens on the ground. And some of those are preliminary short plat process gets the decision, gets any necessary site development, rating permits and infrastructure and so forth, and then goes ahead and, you know, builds out the, the short plat. For the final short plat, Adam is correct in saying when we get that request, that's pre-recording. And the city's role at that point is to essentially go through a checklist. And the preliminary short plat with the conditions of approval and the proposal that was approved, to make sure what's on the ground is matches what was approved in the preliminary short plat. So the process is, you know, it is a final check and balance before recording is authorized. And the thing gets wrapped up and we have lots of record.
Great, thank you for that clarification. Okay, looks like we have all of the questions out. So given that, are, does anybody have a motion they want to put on the table in regards to ZTR 21 dash 006? And then we'll discuss and deliberate.
I would make a motion, but are there more questions before I do?
I, Mike and Carolyn, I, I thought I had asked for questions, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, I had my hand up, I guess, for making a motion, but I didn't have a question.
Okay, so I saw Mike's hand first and then you, Carolyn, Mike, did you have?
Yeah, I, I have a motion and the motion I would make is that we adopt alternative A. And that we also recommend that the council approve the resources to build out option B. Because I think that will be a really useful tool for the citizens. But I believe that option A gets to the point of a little additional notice with accessible documents for people that would be interested in, in those items. And I think the impact on staff is minimal in terms of work. These are items that are relatively rare, but they can have significance for a community or, or an area. So I would move adoption of option A and recommend approval or council approval for the resources for option B.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Commissioner Friedman on the second first. I'll start handing out gold stars to build up your chart. Mike, I know you've just made sort of a speech to being in favor of that, but do you want to expound anymore? Or do you want me to open it to the floor?
No, I think the points are made, but I'll address any questions that someone may have.
Okay. Any other comments or feedback or deliberation related to the motion on the floor? Carolyn?
Well, oops, yeah. I, having heard from the, the director about the final short plat, again, I'm thinking that that isn't really something people are commenting on or, or things like that. So I'm, I'm not in favor of the ordinance at all, but I would suggest an amendment to remove the final short plat from the ordinance and just go forward with the seasonal development waiver if, if everybody wants an ordinance.
Is that an official motion that you're making, Carolyn? Okay, so it's been moved to remove the final short plat from the recommended items to move to type two. Is there a second for that motion? Is there a second to Carolyn's motion to remove the final short plat from table A? Okay, unfortunately, Carolyn, hearing none, the motion will not, to amend will not move forward. Tiffin?
Um, I just wanted to say I, I am supportive of the option B and kind of think the city should invest in that. But given the fact that option A will not, will result in like about an hour worth of work for the staff for the year. I mean, probably less time than we're spending on this video call on the topic. I, I'm fairly agnostic about it. But what I would say in terms of, I, I kind of see the city moving off the weekly bulletin in general and moving more to, you know, a more robust interface where people can pull those permits directly from the tool that you've recommended, Adam. But I, I don't have a sense of how difficult that is or how much time's involved. So I'll stay out of that. But I would, I would just say in general, I would put our resources into building something for the future rather than, you know, kind of fiddling with what we have right now, which is maybe not an optimal solution.
Okay, Carolyn, you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I agree with what, what Tiffany has said here because the more I look at it, the, the less valuable I think the weekly bulletin is. And I think, did this just start in 2016, if I'm not mistaken, Adam?
I believe that was when it was adopted.
I think it came as a result of people testifying during the residential development standards that there wasn't enough transparency and ways to learn about what was going on. And so this was thrown out there, I guess, as a way to try to address that. And it, you know, it's appreciated, but hopefully the more sophisticated approaches will develop in the future.
Okay, Jeff, I see you have your, your hand.
Yeah, just quickly, Commissioner Bozeman, was, was your question about how long the bulletin has been around? Oh, yeah, the bulletin's been around for I would say at least 20 years.
I thought I read in our packet something about 2016, but okay, thank you for that update.
They added, they changed the noticing requirements in 2016, which required more things to have notice in the bulletin as well as with mailings and signs and things like that.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Okay, the only thing that I'll add, I mean, to, I think, Tiffin's point, I'm a bit ambivalent about changing the table, just given the number of those that we deal with. I tend to fall, and I'll make this statement just so that it's on the record, I tend to fall on the side of you know, trying not to encumber too much process with too many of these things, especially when we have such an onerous code and so many other ways. I understand that it's not a huge amount of work, but I have a tendency to, after years of doing this with both the city of Mercer Island and, and other cities I've been a part of, it always seems like we're sending a death by a thousand cuts to our staff and to the people that are trying to use and implement our code. So I, I'm, I'm not going to fight this because I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal. But Tiffin, I think, said it perfectly, which is we need to be building code, policy and processes, a city that move us forward with our technology and move us forward in how we interact with our communities and using, you know, legislative tools like the, like the review types and how those are done. In this case, I just, I don't see a tremendous amount of benefit, but if it's the will of the group to include those, I don't see it causing any harm. So I'm not gonna, I'm not going to fight it from that perspective. Commissioner Friedman?
Yeah, I, I concur with what you just said. And I, and I think we're all probably maybe a little sensitive to this, based on the public comment, commentary period we just had and concerns about, you know, making sure that we are proactively communicating to our citizens appropriately. And, and so the tool is fantastic, as I said, Adam. And I think that is, that is ultimately the solution and the ultimate solution is, is technology. And to, to improve our transparency and in our proactive communication at the appropriate level. And so the fact that the staff took the initiative and, and built out that prototype is fantastic. And so, you know, again, just go along on that and, and hopefully the extra lift of of taking these permit types from type one to type two. Hopefully that'll go away with just greater technology, you know, efficiency gained by technology.
Thank you, Mike.
You know, just a couple of final comments. I, I agree, Dan, with your comments. And, you know, as a land use practitioner for many years, you know, more regulation is not a good thing. I view this as something that's simply a matter of a small amount of additional transparency for people who might be interested in certain activities. And that's, that's really the only reason why I think this is valuable. And that was what I kind of thought the spirit was in the original application to create that. And so I think, I think for that reason, and really that reason alone, it's worth doing. But I want to echo Jordan's comments too. I, I think the tool I I think the tool that is being developed is is the ultimate answer. Because the type one, type two, type three, type four schema is a really kind of old school scheme, but it is used by pretty much everyone to divide how you notice people. But with improvement in technology, we should be able to ultimately generate a much, much more robust and more direct system.
Yeah, it's not a far cry to think that you have an electronic system where you could just go in and say, give me a notice of any permit that's been issued within a particular radius from my house. And the computer just does it, right? So, uh, that's, those are the sorts of things that I think the future of continuing down that road will enable. Uh, great, any last questions or sorry, any last comments from anyone? Otherwise, I'll have Lori call for a roll call. All right, Lori, if we can call a roll call, though, the motion is to recommend uh, both alternative A and amending the land use tables in table A attached as well as recommending council consider resourcing of alternative B uh, as provided by staff. If you'd like to call for a vote?
Yes. So Commissioner Reese.
I'm.
Commissioner Goodman.
Hi.
Commissioner Friedman.
I.
Chair Hubble.
I.
Vice Chair Murphy.
I.
Commissioner Boatsman.
No.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the motion passes five to one with Commissioner Boatsman dissenting. Thank you all very much for that, Adam, and appreciate the work that you did to work with the staff to have a great solution there related to something more programmatic that the staff could enable.
Thanks.
Let's move to, I gotta click on my next little staff memo here. ZTR twenty one dash zero zero four related to the town center commercial requirements. I'm not sure, Jeff or Sarah, do you guys have a an intro or any presentation before we move to deliberation?
We do, Chair. Sarah's gonna run you through a very short uh, kind of recap of the agenda packet for you. Um, before we get to that, though, I I would have, Chair, if I may. This is, uh, we've got a few items left on the agenda after this one item six through ten or agenda. And item six in particular, I believe it's item six, which is the conference plan presentation. Uh, staff, staff essentially made the same presentation to City Council last night. And just as an advisory with the presentation and Q and A, that took about an hour with City Council. So just as you, as you kind of move through your next item here. Um, keep in mind that you've probably got about seventy five to ninety minutes after this item of other agenda material left. But I would just, but that's helpful to any of you, given that we just did the presentation last night. I thought I'd mention that. Um, with that, um, this item here, following up on the public hearing earlier this evening. This is, um, I believe the fifth meeting in total that the commission has taken up this subject. And with that, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah and she'll walk you through a recap of the packet materials and the questions that are in front of the commission. And I know that Commissioner Goodman and Vice Chair Murphy authored a memorandum that was distributed uh, here within the last week or so. And then I also understand there might be a couple of other commissioners that have some other potential amendments or motions as well. So with that, Sarah, go ahead and take it away.
Thanks, Jeff. And can everyone see the presentation?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so as Jeff mentioned, this is just gonna be a quick recap of some materials that were already in your packet. Uh, I want to note that originally the staff memo and this presentation had included uh, sort of an outline for a process for deliberation based on previous discussions earlier this week with Chair and Vice Chair and, um, the materials that we've received subsequently from other commissioners. Um, I'm just gonna run through really quickly the items that were presented for consideration. And then I'm gonna turn it back over to Dan and you guys can figure out how, um, you can determine how best you want to move forward. So, uh, tonight, back again discussing ZTR twenty one zero zero four about town center commercial requirement. Having some slight advancement issues. Hold on just a second. Let me stop sharing for a second and try this again. Okay, can you see the presentation again?
Yeah, it's on the, um, sort of the standard PowerPoint screen. It's not presentation mode. It's I can still see that the slides on the side.
Hmm, okay. All right, y'all. Okay. How does it look now?
I am still seeing the sort of edit. I mean, I can see your mouse.
Okay. Hold on, we're good?
Well, I you just clicked on items for consideration, so it's, uh, it's advancing. We're, I mean, we're just still seeing the full. You know, presentation with the slides on the side and the whole bit, so.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't know if you had it in presentation mode or not.
It is in presentation mode. I'm working on two screens today and they never share correctly when I need them to, so.
No.
I've gotta go with this just to keep it moving, you all. Again, you already got this material, so we'll keep it going. So the first item for consideration that, um, City Council wanted you all to take a look at was this update to the commercial FAR or no net loss revision. City Council proposed combining the commercial FAR and the no net loss requirements into the greater of the two requirements that has been before you the last couple of meetings. Um, the updated figure three to the right identifies the parcels that would be subject to that requirement. And so the question being asked about this is, does the planning commission support this revision? And you'll deliberate from there. The second main question relates to the list of eligible uses. The City Council proposed adding visual and performing arts venues to the list of eligible uses adjacent to ground floor, street frontage. Uh, planning commissioners have also expressed a desire to expand that list of eligible uses. So tonight you may consider deliberating a variety of uses that have been discussed. Um, and you may consider adding additional eligible uses. City Council also proposed adding a trigger to evaluate the requirements. So it would have been either or five years from the date of adoption or when seventy five thousand square feet of eligible commercial use has been authorized through building permit. So again, um, there's specific language that has been presented in the code revisions. And the question is, planning commission supportive of adding the review mechanism to the code? There were also a couple of additions related to visual and performing arts venues. So if the planning commission elects to move forward with adding these as eligible uses, the City Council also directed you all to look at an exemption for the sixty foot contiguous linear street frontage max as well as establish a five thousand square foot cap for those uses. That would be applied to the commercial FAR and no net loss requirement. Uh, again, are you supportive of either of these? There's the question on the table tonight. And then there were two other elements that have come up over the last couple of meetings that we added to the list for discussion tonight. The first, uh, I think actually it came up in the public comment period as well. Um, these proposed requirements are are intended to apply to ground floor use. Um, in discussion at the last commission meeting, it was raised that the actual code language is unclear. And, uh, the existing code language states required ground floor uses. That's how the code refers to these requirements as it stands. But that language was unintentionally not carried over in the new version. So tonight we're asking if planning commission, um, agrees with the ground, ground floor requirement use. And if you are open to adding ground floor back into the code language to clarify those requirements. And then finally, another element that was unintentionally omitted relates to driveways, loading areas, parking garage entrances and lobbies and how they contribute to the street frontage requirements. Um, there's similar language existing already in the code. And again, that was unintentionally carried over, not carried over when the code was drafted to replace um, the current nineteen eleven zero two zero B. So tonight we are asking if you all are supportive of permitting that language, permitting driveways, loading areas, parking garage entrances and lobbies on street frontages being added back into the code. So I'm gonna stop sharing my mess of a screen right now and turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, I'm just, uh, writing one last note. Before we go to any potential motions or discussion, does anyone have any questions for Sarah or Jeff? Carolyn?
I thought the the PowerPoint that I looked at earlier today was a bit longer than that. Did you go through the whole thing?
Uh, so I deleted one slide, which was the first slide about the process for deliberation. Um, since it kind of sounds like we probably aren't going to go down that route. And then there was a a final slide. Um, it's just sort of an informational slide that includes definitions of all of the potential eligible uses that have been discussed to date. Um, so that was the only, those were the only two missing slides.
I thought there was something about your public outreach that you did and all sorts of things. Am I thinking of a different document?
I think you're thinking of the staff memo that we've included in the packet as well.
Okay.
Page three of five of the staff memo, uh, addresses that subject, Commissioner Boatsman.
I do have questions about a number of things in what you just showed us, but I need to be looking at the screen in order to ask them. I just wondered if now that you're done presenting, I would I would suggest this to the Chair, is that maybe we just go through this presentation that she just gave us and give us our chances to ask those questions uh, per topic.
Yeah, and you just have, uh, what clarifying questions about what's
Yeah.
being recommended?
Yeah, I have questions about what she presented.
So, yeah, if you want to go ahead and and ask your questions, uh, we will do that if we can, like Jeopardy. Give your answers in the form of a question, that would be great. Do you want it up on the screen, Sarah? Would you mind sharing that again? And you're still on mute, Sarah, just FYI.
No. I think my Zoom skills have regrets.
I should play the Jeopardy theme song while you're getting this up on the screen?
Okay.
Great. Uh, Carolyn, where would you like to start?
Um, right here, uh, so the first point, the first bullet, the City Council proposed combining the commercial FAR and the no net loss into a greater of the two. Um, when I look back, when I consider back where we first started with this, we had a no net loss for properties that had redeveloped. Is it prior to two thousand and five?
Correct.
And then we had the point two six applying to those that had not yet developed. Am I, am I getting that correct?
Post, post two thousand and five.
Oh, okay, so the no net loss was for those who had redeveloped after two thousand and five. And the point two six was those who had not redeveloped, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this says they proposed combining those two requirements into a greater of the two. But what I'm seeing now in the proposed code is that something different from what this says. I'm seeing that, um, properties that have far more than point two six or no matter whether they've developed after two thousand and five or not, they're required to keep whatever they have upon redevelopment. I think that's what the code says now. Isn't that correct?
Do you mean the existing code or the most updated version?
Yeah, the most updated version.
So, so the the most updated version effectively combines the two parcel maps that were included in the previous versions that we discussed, um, last year before going back to City Council. So there, there, that's why there are more parcels and it's a different color in this map. Now, every single parcel identified in this map would be subject to either the commercial FAR or the no net loss. And that suggestion, I believe, came in response, um, to the concern that we would potentially lose a a greater amount of retail square footage upon redevelopment upfront. Uh, and so City Council's proposal was to combine those options. So, you know, a a property that may have more than, um, the FAR number of commercial square footage that hasn't redeveloped yet. Now, rather than just being subject to the FAR, it would be subject to either the FAR or the no net loss. Um, those, those parcels that developed post two thousand and five that are now also identified on this map as instead of as a separate map, uh, they would be subject to the same greater than situation. So, you know, say that they, um, some, a parcel, a property burned down tomorrow and they needed to redevelop. Um, under this new code, they would have to go by whichever was greater of the two, the FAR, the no net loss.
Yeah, that that's what I was looking for, just that, um, it it actually took the the no net loss for development past two thousand and five and and made that applicable to 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 everyone. And that's, it's a little bit different than what it says, but that's, that's fine. I wanted to make sure that 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 was really clear. Okay, that's all I have for that page.
And I, and again, it is, it is a greater than, greater of the two requirements. So there are some parcels that would be subject to this requirement. That now, you know, pre two thousand and five, so they haven't redeveloped, that the FAR would actually amount in more commercial redevelopment on their property, even though they would now be also subject to the no net loss.
Mm hmm, okay, that's the only question I had for that page.
Oh, my goodness, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen again because it's still.
That looked good. I mean, we could see it.
Yeah, it was fine.
Now the slides aren't advancing, so you know.
Um, while you're figuring that out, um, I just looked through my email and I don't have that deck. And sometimes it's it's helpful to just have our own copy so we can, you know, stay on a slide longer if we, if we need to kind of drill into it. Do you, did you send this to us? And I just haven't been able to find it.
It was included as an exhibit in the agenda packet. And there were a lot of exhibits in that packet, so that. And there were a lot of exhibits in that packet, so that, that may be part of the issue.
I didn't have a question on this page.
Okay.
I think we, did we skip the, I don't know if it's not working again. Sarah, but the list of eligible uses page.
Did you have a question on this one, Carolyn?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I also, I have a question about this page, you know, I'm needing a little help with the seventy five thousand square foot number now. There's been so much changes and things going on, I just, what's that based on at this point?
I will let Jeff take that one.
It, it's not based on anything scientific. It's, it's based on an approximation that that may be somewhere in the vicinity of three to five developments that would build, which to the council seemed like a reasonable number to do a review of this code or five years from the date of adoption. But there commissioner, there's nothing, there's nothing super scientific about them. It's a, it's a general approximation through to five developments.
Okay, I, I thought that originally that we were looking for a number that would trigger review and possibly at that point relieve businesses from having to be subject to the no net loss. Because there'd been enough new commercial square footage gained through development. That that would be enough, no? So that's what I thought we were trying to do.
No, I, I
I, I, I don't. Go ahead, Sarah.
I was just going to say, I don't, we may have, that may have come up in discussion at a previous planning commission meeting, but that was not ultimately the there was no language or anything included with that. It didn't move past earlier discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Are you good there, Carolyn? Next page?
Yeah, thanks. I don't have a question on that page. I don't have a question here, no question. This one I have a question about. Cause I don't quite get what this is about. Are we talking about trying to allow driveways, loading areas, parking garage entrances and lobbies to count for FAR?
No, that's not, that's not what's being proposed. What is being proposed is permitting these, the, the language was, the language is included in the code as it stands right now. And currently the language states that a parking garage entrance or permitted, you know, a driveway or anything like that, it can't, it cannot count towards the sixty forty requirement for street frontage, ground floor use, street frontage. We are just proposing adding back in very brief language that permits these driveways, loading areas, parking garage entrances and lobbies because they were unintentionally omitted before current, the, the revised draft code that you have currently states nothing about allowing driveways. And in discussions with, you know, through some of the outreach that we've done, it became apparent that this is something that we need to consider. So we wanted to bring it forth to the commission now before we continue moving forward. So it's not unintentionally omitted again.
I think I just heard you say something about them not counting for FAR. I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm still wondering why you might have said that. Does this have anything to do with FAR? Or are we just discussing whether people can have driveways and loading areas and et cetera on frontage requirements?
Yes, it's so it would not, go ahead, Jeff.
No, commissioners, just carrying forward code that was in the repealed section that needs to come back into. If there's going to be new code adopted, one way or the other, this language should be included in the new code. It's, it's that first bullet is, is the language from the existing code as it exists today. So it has nothing to do with FAR. It's, if, if you have a property with only one street frontage, you need to be able to access a parking garage potentially. You might need be able to require to be accessed a lobby, for example, if it's a mixed use building with residential above. That's all we're trying to do here is just make sure that this language isn't left behind and forgotten.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had there.
And that's the last slide. So I will
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Tiffany.
Um, I was wondering if I could ask, it's not a question related to the presentation, but it was related to one of the public comments. It kind of, it jogged my memory that our, our town center code and comprehensive plan more or less mimic each other. And so I was wondering what the staff proposed to do in terms of updating the comprehensive plan. So it's not inconsistent with the code if changes are adopted.
They, the town center plan is incorporated into the comprehensive plan. And our position on that currently, which based on public comments that have been received from the SEPA checklist are being reviewed by staff, including the city attorney's office. But these code changes, as they've progressed forward in our opinion to date is that they are consistent with comprehensive plan. But that again is under review based on comments that we've received from the public and we're, we're working actively working on those as we speak.
Okay, I, I'm sure you are. Okay, thanks for that. I, when we get to the next discussion on the comprehensive plan, I actually have some similar comments related to that, but thank you for that information.
Okay, before moving to motions, any last questions for staff? Mike?
Just to follow up on Jeff's last answer, what's the timeline for that? Addressing that question because in my experience, you know, the issue of putting the cart before the horse can be a problem legally, which is the zoning before the, the comp plan. And so is there a timeline when staff is going to have an evaluation of whether there's a problem there or not?
There is no, there is no exacting timeline for an outcome. However, I can share with you, it's a matter that's been looked at both by staff and legal counsel before. And so now we're doubling back again based on what's been submitted to the city here just recently with public comments. So that's, I'm sharing with you everything I know at this point, Commissioner, Vice Chair, excuse me.
All right, um, thank you, Mike. I know we've deliberated this over a few meetings now from there. So given what has been presented to us, I know a few commissioners have sent in some comments ahead of time. Does anyone want to have any emotions they would like to start us with? Victor?
Yeah. So we've received some written and oral testimony raising some significant concerns from this Tobin, Mr. Katsaroff, Ms. Grandbois, Mr. Goldbach. I think some of those commenters may be surprised that I actually agree with their comments. In addition, we've also received additional written proposals and concerns from Commissioner Vice Chair Murphy and Commissioner Goodman. I moved that the planning commission remand ZTR twenty one dash zero zero four back to city staff for additional work to address the illegitimate concerns raised this evening, including but not limited to one part, public participation requirements of RCW thirty six dot seven zero eight dot zero three five, including outreach and full engagement of MI town center stakeholders, including town center business owners. Two, SEPA concerns. Three, traffic impacts and parking requirements of the current proposal. Four, impacts of recently proposed statewide zoning legislation, which could alter how MI chooses to absorb its GMA growth allocations. Five, treatment of non-conforming uses within the town center, including impacts to existing tenants who no longer meet the definition of services. Five inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan, which was just discussed by Tiffany and Mike Murphy and Jeff. Six, commercial needs assessment with regard to street frontage and depth of commercial space. Seven, impacts of the FAR and no net loss approaches on both property owners and business owners. Eight, alternative methods to encourage the retail uses most desired needed by the community. And lastly, need for professional input to address the issues above.
Okay, if I can summarize the motion, the motion is to essentially to
Remand the
Make, yeah, make a recommendation to the council that the this be pursued further by staff for further to address the eight or 10 issues that you spelled out.
Well, there's, there's more than I, I, what I said was including but not limited to. So I didn't want to enumerate every single issue that was raised in the public hearing. Prior to the meeting, I went through and kind of pulled out the salient points out of the letters that we had received and the comments that we had gotten, both from the public in, in the public hearing as well as the comments that we've previously received from Vice Chair Murphy and Commissioner Goodman.
Oh, second to motion.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. So yeah, just from a, just to make this as clean as possible, Victor, and to reiterate, I'll paraphrase the motion in that you are proposing that we send this back to council with no recommendation or with the recommendation that this continues to be or that this a additional, basically additional work and information and concerns remain. And we will have an accessory list of items that we will note to that effect. Is that a good summary?
Uh, so
At a high level.
My, my language said back to staff, if it needs to go through council before it goes back to staff, that's fine. I have no issues with that. Just for ease of use, I've got the, the language up on my screen. If you want, I can send it an email to Lori, just so that she's got the
Yeah, that would be great. And my recommendation would be that our recommendation is back to the council. And so we would just want to phrase it as that, that our recommendation would be to we, we can't direct staff, council does, so our recommendation would be to them to do that.
That's fine, then. I'm, I'm fine with that. I assume that that's a friendly amendment or
Yeah, yes. Are you okay with that, Carolyn?
Oh, yeah.
Which nuance?
Yes.
Okay, and Lori will clean that up for you. So it's been moved and seconded. Victor, do you want to speak more to that before I open the floor?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right, any other, does anyone else want to start with commentary on that?
And I'm just typing up, sending this to Lori and I've CC'd you.
I know Jeff gave us a shot clock, but that doesn't mean you don't have to talk. Carolyn, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I listened to the, to the laundry list there by Victor, but I may want to offer a friendly amendment to add to the laundry list. I think that, you know, seven people on a, six people on a Zoom screen and, you know, others who have, of course, participated cannot really imagine all the different types of businesses that creative human beings might propose in our town center. You know, I have reservations about even prescribing what businesses should be allowed and which one shouldn't be. We did get testimony from a gentleman about how they didn't used to have those type of restrictions and how difficult that has been since those restrictions of saying what kind of businesses you have to have. So I think we need, and I have asked for a number of times, probably at least three times in writing and verbally, a way to consider a proposed business and that can opt in, that doesn't necessarily exist in a list of businesses that we said were allowed. There needs to be some sort of process. You know, Tracy Grandbois today in her comments said, well, what about a hotel? What about a movie theater? What about lease offices? And what, what else have we forgotten? I mean, there's no way that is illogical to think that we can come up with a list of everything that should be allowed. So some way add those ones that she's mentioning and also a way to review and allow businesses. Okay, so that's one. We need to resolve the question of lease extensions. Are those allowed? What happens then? The overbuilding question needs to be solved. Seems like with the no net loss and greater than, we're getting more square footage of commercial space than was needed. Yet we, you know, our, our review trigger is, doesn't seem to be tethered to anything. So what's the purpose of the review, reviewed trigger in relation to how much square footage we think we're going to get? That should be figured out. So I don't know if it's a good time to mention it, but I'm, I'm not in favor of, of the greater than whatever you call it, where, where the businesses that have more than point two six have to. But I guess that doesn't really fit into this discussion, but I don't know where we get to that kind of discussion band, so.
Well, I, I think the motion on the table is to basically say that we, we, the motion, I think that Victor's saying is that we all think that that's basically inadequate and we're, we're recommending
Okay.
to not recommend it basically, so not, not sure anything more needs to be said than what you've said, which is, it doesn't work.
I could, I could put these things in some bullets or something and send them to you, but
Well, I'll, as, let me get the commentary from the group and then we'll get to try to refine maybe a little bit more. I have a feeling this is a direction we're moving in. So Commissioner Friedman, oh, sorry.
I would, I just, can I get confirmation from Lori that you got the motion?
I did get the motion, yes.
Thank you, Victor. Jordan?
Yeah, this, this entire topic that we've been working on for the last couple of months makes me question my own intelligence. And when, when Ms. Tobin, first her, you have her written remarks and then she read them to us in tonight's meeting. They're incredibly compelling and it's, it's it's, it's really concerning that we, that we are doing exactly the opposite of our intent, that we might be. But when I, but when I read her, her comments and her concerns, I don't know if she's misinterpreting the direction of this. And so that's something I would ask my fellow commission members who are smarter than I am on this stuff or the staff and or the staff to, you know, just it's, I, I think it's completely legitimate. We should be able to say, actually, Mrs. Tobin, you've misinterpreted this or no, you're absolutely right. We, you know, if, if this, if this goes through the way we have crafted it, then, you know, then your property is is severely impacted and, and, you know, it runs counter to what we're trying to achieve here. So that, I guess, I, I assume we're going, you know, this motion from Victor is going to pass. And I would just add that as my, you know, additional feedback, additional guidance. If the city council accepts this and passes it back to the staff, you know, take these, take the specific feedback and come back to us with your analysis of it. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, Jordan, if I can add something and then Mike, I'll get to you. I saw you raised your hand. Just because you're speaking directly to the comments from Ms. Tobin. You know, I was thinking about the L-shaped parcel that she was representing at Ilandia Center. And, you know, it, it has two street frontages, one of which is on, I believe, only one of which is on the map. I gotta scroll to it if I can find it again. But you know, I was thinking even if both of them were on, on that map, you know, there's maybe a total of two hundred square feet of street frontage there, and yet that lot is actually pretty deep and rather large. And it strikes me that, you know, to her point about really bowling alley shaped retail space, you know, if you had even no driveway along whatever that main street is seventy-eighth. You know, to have twenty-six percent of the FAR there, you're going to have, you know, these, this retail space that is just extremely long and big. Look at the, I'll call it the flagpole lot where the Baskin Robbins is. And just think of the odd shape that the retail space is going to have to take up. Because if you look at the building next door to that, which is basically the same shape, it's like a thirty-foot wide lot. There's a driveway there and you're left with like a fifteen-foot frontage that because it's a really deep lot, they're going to have to have a fifteen thousand square foot space that goes back, you know, that's a huge distance into that, that could potentially be just completely unusable. And so I think to your point, Jordan, I have a whole bunch of other questions I've written down, but, but just the articulation of the fact, and this is what she said that I wrote down that I think is the key piece to all of this, which is looking at no net loss or even the FAR requirement, frankly, it continues to propagate outdated business and development models in a completely new environment with a completely different new type of businesses that we're seeing in our town center. And that really struck me that we just don't, we haven't done the, the outreach to understand what those business needs are. And that statement from her alone, I mean, there was a lot of other great commentary, both written and oral that was presented this evening that supports that. But that one comment, that one statement alone to me, I think is a really big linchpin in saying, I'm, I'm not sure we're solving any problem to begin with, but let alone the problem that the council thinks we're trying to solve. So, sorry, that was long-winded, Mike. Go ahead.
No, that was good. Some of what I, I would add to is, is the, not only the outreach to the business owners and owners of property, but enlistment of professional support in terms of design of what is feasible, what is not feasible. And, you know, it was something that I was, was pushing for months ago when this came, came in front of us the first time. And, you know, I, I think there's a reluctance to, to engage. And, you know, the city ends up hiring people like CAI who are competent in their own right for certain things, but they're not providing that type of input. And, and our staff, as, as great as they have been and as how, as much work as they put into this, they don't have the qualifications to do that analysis. And they don't have, and they haven't been able to do, and have, don't have the ability to do that analysis for individual sites to get a real idea how FAR or no net loss or any system like that would operate. And so I think that critical to this process is for the city to actually engage some parties, whether on a pay or volunteer or some combination basis, to, to help us develop the type of town center regulations that will actually give us, you know, something that we can be proud of.
Tiffin, do you have any comments? I think you're the only one we haven't heard from.
So, yeah, I think what Mike said is well said. What's kind of concerned me about this for a while is just we didn't have a really good handle on development feasibility, both just from a standard perspective and economic perspective. And, you know, kind of our gut was it doesn't really work, but we didn't really have much to go on other than that. So, so, yeah, Mike, I would echo, I would echo your comments. And I would, I guess I'd also just say some of the really specific public input is very helpful because it really gives us examples of what we need to look at that we haven't considered. Like, we've thought a lot, but there's, there's a lot we don't know as well. And I also say, Jordan, don't feel bad. It's, it's good to ask questions and, and I'm glad you're here. So, so thank you.
Carolyn. Oh, you're on mute still.
So whereas Victor's motion is a, you know, long list of things to look at, and there might be more things to look at that we haven't put in that list, of course. We go back to, well, what is the problem actually? What was the city council trying to do? You know, what prompted this moratorium in the first place? It was just, you know, development coming in without commercial space. You know, and if that's what they wanted to solve, you know, I'm tempted to make a motion to solve that. But you know, maybe, maybe the goal is just to do a whole lot more study, but I'm going to try something. You know, I move that we prescribe a certain amount of commercial space for any redevelopment in the town center, in the map that is presented to us, that that amount be the same for everyone. And that we don't prescribe what the use should be, other than that it is commercial use.
So, um, just Carolyn, I, and I appreciate the motion. I, because we have a motion on the table currently right now, we would, we will take, like, if you want to amend what, what Victor has proposed, we can propose it in that way. Otherwise, we would take a vote on that and then we could get to a secondary motion.
I'm sorry, I, I was out of line. I was just dying to explain, you know, something that, you know, besides more study, what can we do that actually addresses a problem that the city council was trying to solve? Okay, thank you.
Well.
Sorry about that.
No, in that vein, Carolyn, I want to read a comm. So Commissioner, I think this came from Commissioner Goodman or Commissioner Murphy. Maybe you guys worked on this together, I believe. There's, there's actually a paragraph in here to me that actually summarizes my entire view on this exercise. And I just want to read it so that it's on the record, so that when the city council goes and watches this deliberation, they hear the words, rather than relying on something that might be transmitted to them. So what I think, and, and this is in, the line item is in Victor's motion, which is alternative methods to encourage the retail uses most desired and needed by the community. And every time I've asked this question, it's come up a number of times when I've asked council members directly, there's this concern, not only of the quantity of retail space, but really it comes down to the types of retail that the council is concerned about. And so as this was in the transmittal, the planning commission has discussed the need to, one, coalesce more clearly around a shared vision for the town center and the environs. And two, explore other policy tools to influence town center redevelopment and the mix of businesses in the town center to support that vision. If the city wishes to target certain types of commercial uses, restaurants, for example, different types of programs should be examined. These could include more granular and restrictive uses in certain areas or corridors, things like a certain street dedicated to just restaurants, for example. More prescriptive requirements for how spaces in certain areas are built. So for example, in a particular corridor, you have a work, different HVAC requirements than in other parts of the town center. And finally, other incentive programs, tax incentive programs, there are a lot of other legislative incentive programs that the council could put in place. And so highly, as a, as a commission, the way this was written here, you know, we do not recommend highly prescriptive requirements more broadly in the town center, as this could result in an abundance of difficult to lease commercial space, which I think is reflected in the comments that we heard tonight. However, a targeted program created with robust outreach to the community could be beneficial in achieving a desired mix of uses over time. And, you know, my position is, is that this is something that the council hasn't really talked about. It hasn't been in the purview of what we've been talking about because we've strictly been looking at code language. But the reality is, is the council has a lot of other tools in their toolbox that they could be using to achieve these. And right now, we're trying to use a hammer on the building, the town center land use code. When we should be using some other more precise tools to affect the outcomes that we want. So I believe that's reflected in one of the bullet points that Victor has presented in sort of his list of concerns that we have here. And to me, I, I think is probably a key one, not on, notwithstanding a number of others that I think are also important. So, thank you for indulging me with that. So I, we could, I guess, put up on the screen the list of items that Victor had proposed as concerns that we want to transmit back to the council. If that's possible. Do people want to review that list and/or potentially revise it or add other things? Or do you want us to just want it to read it out loud? I don't know, Lori, or if someone else has the ability to. I know it went to Lori, but I can forward it to whomever else if we can maybe present that.
Can you put it on the screen, Dan?
I can.
I guess I could, I can, I can share my screen, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Now that I said that, I believe I can share my screen. Share screen, big green button, look at that. Now I just have to figure out which screen I am sharing. Let's see, let's go to screen number one. I have to hit the share button. Out of the way. All right, are you able to see the screen here? Let me see if I can make this a little larger. So folks can read it. Is that large enough to read? Okay.
Good, looks good.
Great. So I'll just read these so that they're in the public record one more time. I know Victor read them during his motion. The first would, so this is a list of concerns that we would like to remand back to. And what I'll do is I'll change this to the, actually, I'm going to just hit reply on this so I can edit it in real time. And we can, oops, went the wrong way. So we can edit this in real time and then I'll forward this to staff. So, back to see, council for additional work to address the legitimate concerns raised this evening. So the first is public participation with an RCW cited here related to the outreach and full engagement of town center stakeholders and town center business owners. The second item is concerns related to SEPA. The third is traffic and parking. The fourth, impacts to proposed, I should say, this is probably potential impacts. Is that okay, Victor?
Sure, that's fine.
Since that, since it hasn't actually passed.
Yep.
Impacts of recently proposed statewide zoning legislation, which could alter how Mercer Island chooses to absorb its growth allocations. This is, I believe, number five. I'm just going to number these so that I can read them better this way. Number five, treatment of non-conforming uses within the town center, including impacts to existing tenants who no longer meet the definition of services. Number six, inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. I'm going to come back because I have a question about that. Number seven, commercial needs assessment with regard to street frontage and depth of commercial space. Eight, impacts of the FAR and no net loss approaches on both property owners and business owners. Number nine, I'm just going to say, consider, if that's okay. By alternative methods to encourage the retail uses most desired needed by the community. And number ten, need for professional input to address the issues above.
If you're going to say, if you're going to say consider for nine, you should say consider for ten as well.
Okay. Okay, Carolyn, you have your hand up. Did you have a?
Yeah. I think number four has, is not making it out of the legislature. I think that one died today. So you probably aren't going to need number four.
Uh, I think we had, I think we had a legislator say, yeah, it's going to come back in a different form. Run at it. I think that was on Twitter.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's no harm in including it, even if it does die, it's still.
Okay, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm looking at this list now that I can see it. And I'm seeing that some of the things I asked for before are probably incorporated in what's already here. So I'm just checking my notes right now to see if anything else is needed there in my view.
And, and again, I'll point out that there were detailed letters from Mr. Katsaroff, Ms. Tobin, Ms. Grandbois, and then obviously Mr. Goldbach as well. Not every single point is reflected here, which is why I included the language that said, including but not limited to. All those, all those letters are in the public record. And I'm sure that they will be referred to by both the council and the city staff.
Well, I think your list is, is, you know, pretty complete and it's open-ended enough things can, can come up based on logic.
Okay, are there any other comments on the list that has been proposed?
Just give me a moment here.
Okay, I'll go to the rest of the group, Carolyn. Anybody else? Jordan. Hearing none from Jordan, Mike, any other?
No.
additions or changes?
I think all the major things are addressed.
Tiffin?
No, this is good.
If I can, the only thing that I would ask, and, and I don't, I'm not sure where this came out of. Whomever mentioned this, the inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan. Does anyone have any additional comment on that? I'm, I'm not sure where the inconsistencies are.
There is a paragraph in Mr. Katsaroff's letter to the planning committee that's in the packet. Now, he said two letters, one was a SEPA letter that we got later. The one that was in the packet talks about those inconsistencies. And then we obviously also had that discussion with Vice Chair Murphy and Commissioner Goodman and, and Discussion with Vice Chair Murphy and Commissioner Goodman and and. Jeff Thomas.
Great, and would would it be okay to, and I know I'm hedging, so. Tell me if it's not the way I'm I'm want to say potential inconsistencies because until they're actually proven out, I have a hard time.
That's fine.
I think that's better.
Okay, Carolyn, did you?
No, that's that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, I was gonna say that. Thanks.
Great. Okay. So. Mike?
Along these same lines, if you go up to number two, the SEPA concerns. We could say potential SEPA compliance issues.
Is everyone okay with that change?
Yep, yep.
Okay, I'm seeing consensus. Okay. So I will. I'll do one last call for commentary before we take a vote. I'm just gonna make my last comments here, which is. Again, just for the record. As I know that there are council members that will view this. You know, I think there are. The number one issue that I have here is, I think, one that's been raised by several people, which is what really is the problem we're trying to solve. I know I've asked that of staff several times. I know that I have asked that on the record in previous meetings. I do have concerns that while the council has spent a lot of time looking at this. You know, the fact that we had staff come to us tonight. With a number of things that were omissions in. The code that was being proposed from the previous stuff to me, and it's no fault of theirs. But I think it's an illustration of how this whole process has just been been rushed and not fully thought out and that the council. Whether it's the entire council or members of the council. Frankly, I feel like there's an agenda that's not being articulated here. And so under the guise of protecting. The loss of retail. We're being asked to consider some half thought out legislation that frankly can have some pretty severe impacts. To our town center that I'm just not comfortable with taking the risk on with the current. Guidance and current data that we have, so. That's my take on this. Commissioner Goodman?
So Dan, actually, I would agree that maybe like the first bullet should be like identify a problem statement or. You know, a goal, a project goal. I would put that there.
So lack of public participation.
I would create a whole.
Is that what you mean?
No.
No, not public. Well, I was thinking we're like, I do think you need to, I mean, I think the general idea is we want, you know. To preserve the commercial we have.
I got I got just saying. I should saying adding an additional here, lack of. What did I say?
Like a clear problem statement or but or goal.
Rather, how about to put it in the positive and just articulate a problem too?
Yeah. So. Legitimate concerns. Including articulation of a curve problem statement. Okay.
And then I was also gonna say this might be more detail than we need, but I I we were gonna look at it, but we didn't get to. We need to really. Understand the uses more. Like, not just, I I know there was one Victor put in one about. You know, encourage, pardon me. Number 10 is good, but I think there's a little more to that in the sense that there are some uses that are. Beneficial now or beneficial in the future, but they may not be the ones that we're all kind of thinking of in terms of like. We really want these, but but maybe there's something we kind of need. And and they're almost all in the use table right now, so. I'm not articulating that too well, but.
On that one, I would argue. 11 subsumes that. Which is, we can, we can all sit around and speculate on. What might be wanted and I, you know, again, the theme that we that we had tonight. I think it may have come up in our comments, it's come up in our, it's come up in this discussion. It's certainly come up in previous discussions and it was certainly when we remanded this back to the city council. Back in December, it was the need for professional advice. Chair Hubble's urban planning experience in college aside. I think we acknowledge that none of us are. Urban planners and we need some help here.
Well, that's not entirely true.
But but certainly not, you know, we're not, I I would agree in that, like, we don't professionally do economic analysis of. A lot of what you're talking about. I'm not a retail marketing person that understands what the current retail marketing. Needs are from a. Macro perspective.
Sure.
So what I've added here, I think, Tiven, does this get to sort of what you were saying here is we have this sort of. Commercial needs assessment with regard to street frontage, depth of commercial space and allowed uses. I think that's what you were getting at, right?
Yeah, that works. Thank you.
To me, that all sort of. Gets into that commercial needs assessment. Statement. Okay. Any last comments or thoughts? Those were good catches. Okay, hearing no additional commentary, the motion on the floor. Is to move that the planning commissioner is that remand ZTR 21 dash zero zero four back to the city council. Which is apparently a. Additional work to address the legitimate concerns raised this evening. With the amended list of concerns that we have. And I'm not sure that the. And I'll just ask staff, I think basically what we're saying is that we're. Making a recommendation to not do anything and that these are the concerns that. Result in that. That should be resulted from that, but. You can see what I have on the screen. So with. No additional comments, Lori, would you like to call a roll call vote?
Yes. So Commissioner Reese.
Hi.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Hi.
Boatsman.
Hi.
Commissioner Goodman.
Hi.
Chair Hubble.
Hi.
Commissioner Friedman.
Hi.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The motion passes six to zero. To. Send this forward, staff. Please let me know how I can assist in the. Creation of whatever we need to send. In this regard, back to the council. And I'm happy to help you with that and I will be sure. To be present when this is presented because I'm sure they will have lots to say. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. With that, we are at eight twenty if we're gonna come back for overview of the comprehensive plan. Hopefully, we can keep that to sixty minutes and not ninety minutes. And so if it's okay. Carolyn, do you have something immediately? I'm gonna take a ten minute recess before we come back. Do you?
Doesn't have to be immediate, but it does have to do with the town center, so.
Oh, okay, so we're, all right, well, let's let's conclude that then before we break.
Okay, so I think you will recall that a little while ago I had. Mentioned that I thought there was some action that we should take in addition to. The motion which we've just approved.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood. You made a comment that you thought that that was encapsulated here, so I apologize. I didn't.
No, no, no problem. No, it was, it's it's very, you know, yes, many of the things I mentioned are in here, but there's there's another matter. So I'm concerned about the city council's crisis that they have and I want to help them out if we can. So or at least make a recommendation to help them out. They've got this moratorium they need to get out of. You know, and I I think the main problem with this project. Has. Been that they overreach. You know, if you've got a crisis and maybe you just need to put a temporary plug in the dyke, which is. They need to have some commercial requirement, commercial space requirement. For redevelopment in the town center. You know, if if that were. To be just something very simple, just a modest request. To tide them over until something like this more complex approach can be put together. Simply. Upon redevelopment, X percent of the square footage in the lot. Will be required to be commercial use and not be prescriptive about what? Or how much street frontage or how deep or this or that, but. I would recommend that the council just get back to the very simple thing they were gonna do. Which is just plug the dyke and get themselves out of the moratorium. So if they could put together a draft ordinance like that, you know, maybe we could support that.
So do you have a motion you would like to make to to that effect and all? Position to the council or?
I can do it. I can do it that way.
Or is that something you just want added to the list of the things that we've that we're basically recommending that they do?
Well. I would look for input from all of you, but I I think. That that would be a recommendation for them to promptly. Just do something that. You know, resolve the worst egregious problem that they have. That's simple and fair. Soon. You know, I don't think we we need to draft that here, but I would recommend to the council that they do that. And, you know, work with staff to come up with something. You know, very straightforward that. Is not so controversial. So they can get out of the moratorium.
All right, Tiven?
I I don't know that it's a great idea to do this because I feel like that's going to kind of like start us back at the beginning again. Like I under, I guess I would say, Carolyn, I understand what you're seeing and I appreciate it, but I I do think there's a lot of other issues that. Would still be coming up and we would still have to go through. This whole public process again, and so then we'd almost like lose that time, if that makes sense, to kind of fix the broader issues.
But I guess if I make reply, I. I guess I think that. It would it be then you think preferable to just? End the moratorium without a commercial requirement and see more development come in without commercial space.
That's that's not my call to make. I guess the the council can make that call.
That's why I'm recommending it so that they consider. You know, making that call. Because I, you know, I I love the eighty twenty rule in life, you know, if you can do a small thing and accomplish eighty eighty percent of your goal. That's worth doing. And, you know, don't sweat the small stuff when you have a crisis. So. I hope they will do something like that because. This kind of thing we're suggesting tonight, this is a long process. It should be a long process. It shouldn't be something that happens in three months. You know, yet you've got this moratorium. They've got to, they've got to get out of the moratorium.
So. Carolyn, do you have a specific motion? Do you want to make or I'm I'm just trying to figure out how you want to communicate that? I mean, I'm I'm happy to. You know. So A, happy to entertain a motion to the group. And B, if you don't have one, you know, the alternate alternative here is, you know, you're always at liberty to. Submit to the council your. Your statements to that effect to make that point.
I will make a motion then. I move that. The. Council direct the staff. To prepare a draft ordinance. That requires commercial space for all. Redevelopment in the town center. With a. Consistent. Percentage requirement from each. Property owner based on. The square footage of the lot.
Okay.
That meets the best estimates of. Commercial property needed in the short term. You know.
Okay. Is there a second to Carolyn's motion? Just asking one more time if there is a second to Carolyn's motion? Okay, hearing none, Carolyn, the motion will die, but I. Again, reiterate, you're more than welcome to send your. Your comments on that directly to the council.
Sure, thank you.
Okay. All right, so with that. Let's take, it is eight twenty nine, let's come back in eleven minutes at eight forty. And we will, at that point, move to item number six related to the comprehensive plan review.
Hey, Dan, you're still sharing your screen there.
I will turn that off and I will send this to everyone that I have here on the two line. Thank you very much. For reminding me and we'll see you in eleven minutes.
Did you send it to the whole commission?
I I don't. Think I can send it to the whole to the to the alias, but. One of the staff, if they can just forward it.
Yep. Right, thank you.
Yep. Yep.
Adam, I see Adam came on as Jeff staying with us or?
Jeff had to take off. I think he was feeling a little under the weather, but um the plan is for Adam to do the presentation. And then we'll both be here for questions and discussion.
All right, that sounds good. Well, we will re-adjourn the meeting now that we have everyone here. Uh we have with us uh. Uh Adam from our planner team. Uh so this is item number six. On our agenda this evening, comprehensive plan periodic review. We'll be reviewing the draft scope, the public participation plan and the schedule and tonight. Uh we just have a presentation and then uh Q and A. This is merely informative to let us know what this process is gonna look like. Uh moving forward. So Adam, I will. Turn over the con.
Okay, now let me share my screen here. Um so as Jeff mentioned earlier, uh this is a similar presentation that we gave the city council last night. Um and the we're really gonna be focusing on kind of a high level overview of uh Growth Management Act. Um the Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan and then um the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review um that we're gonna be getting kicked off here. Um so the first uh there's three sections of the presentation here. First off, I'll kind of summarize the GMA framework and requirements. And then we'll look at the Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan, what what's in the plan. Um and then also what what we're doing with the periodic review. And then the third will will go through kind of what we're asking for for your feedback on in terms of the scope, the schedule and the public participation plan. And as I get to the end of each of these three sections, I'll stop and make sure that um I'll answer whatever questions you might have about that. Um specific area before moving on to the next section. So to start with, we just wanted to give you a quick kind of overview of what GMA is, what the Growth Management Act. Some of the kind of key requirements for GMA um as we're it'll come up quite a bit through this whole process here. Um so the Growth Management Act is a state law that requires the city to um adopt a comprehensive plan. Um to manage growth uh through a twenty year planning period. Um the map on the page or on the screen here um shows which counties and cities are required to adopt comprehensive plans under GMA. So all the the counties in in green here are currently required to adopt comprehensive plans. And that includes King County and Mercer Island. Uh GMA establishes fourteen planning goals. And these are really kind of co-equal goals and you'll notice that some of them, there's some tension between the goals. Um for example, retaining open space and then also ensuring adequate housing. Like there's there's some balancing that has to be done amongst these different planning goals. Um but they're they're all kind of things that we our comprehensive plan should be ultimately kind of furthering these these fourteen goals. Um the GMA also requires that we um coordinate our growth assumptions um both. Like with neighboring jurisdictions and then also regionally. Um and there's also a a population and employment growth that's allocated to um to cities and counties. Uh through that kind of regional coordination process. Um one of the key requirements is that the plan must allow sufficient development capacity to accommodate the projected growth. And that when we're talking about projected growth, usually we're talking about new dwelling units uh for housing capacity. And then for employment capacity, we're talking about like new jobs. Um some of the other key requirements are that um you know, the counties must designate uh natural resource lands, rural lands and urban growth areas. Um another really important piece is this concurrency requirement that um public facilities and infrastructure keep pace with our growth. Um so we have to have policies that that ensure that um that our growth doesn't kind of outpace our ability to provide services. And that also ties in with the capital budget decisions. Um basically, we have to make sure that we're making budget decisions about capital projects consistent with our forecasting growth. And and the land use assumptions in the comprehensive plan. And then finally, this this is one of the more important ones for us uh tonight. Um we have to regularly periodic review uh periodically review our comprehensive plan. Um and update those growth projections and um extend the planning horizon for the plan. Two really important pieces that um we'll have to make sure that we're keeping an eye on throughout this whole process is internal consistency and external consistency. And internal consistency is basically that the the uh provisions of the plan must be consistent with and support one another. Um and so we really have to make sure that when we're adopting new goals and policies or changing goals and policies that they're. That they all work together, that we don't have like an inconsistent transportation policy that doesn't match up with our land use assumptions. And then external consistency is making sure that our plan is consistent with our bordering jurisdictions. Um specifically like our county plan, uh making sure that it remains consistent. That we're using consistent uh assumptions about growth kind of throughout the region um between our neighboring cities. Um all of the all of the GMA requirements really create kind of a framework. Um that is the boundaries of where we can uh make our local choices within. So it's kind of helpful to think like there um there's a wide range of options that we have when we're um making decisions about how we're gonna plan for growth. And then and like I said, the GMA requirements are really kind of the fence around that um and we can make decisions within that. Um so that's really the a very quick high level overview of GMA. Um and I I would take any questions that you might have about that before moving on to the next section.
Let me find the mute button. Uh Victor.
So uh the GMA also requires an economic development element. Um I'm what I'm wondering where are we gonna address that?
Uh well, we'll talk about that in this next section. We're that's part of what we're planning to add to the um complaint.
Great. Any other questions on the overview? Okay, go ahead, Adam.
I'll keep rolling here. Um so the existing uh Mercer Island Comprehensive Plan is divided into topic-specific elements. Um and the elements are composed of goals and policies. So. We currently have six elements of the cop plan. We have land use, housing, transportation, utilities, capital facilities and the shoreline master program. Um through the plan update, we plan on adding uh seventh and an eighth, the parks and recreation element and an economic development element. And really, one of the um kind of important things to remember here is there's. Um i- in terms of how the how the plan is kind of put together. You start with you start with kind of these technical reports that help us understand kind of the the issues that we're gonna be addressing through the plan. Um so these are like data data analyses, um you know, regional planning documents like the the PSRC's Vision twenty fifty or King County Countywide Planning Policies. And then also like our inventories of public facilities and um transportation infrastructure, that kind of thing. And all of those technical reports really form that baseline and the foundation for making decisions about planning. Um and they feed into our comp plan elements. So we use the, you know, for example, like our housing needs assessment is gonna help us understand what goals and policies we may need to amend or adopt. To address some of those those housing needs uh identified in the housing needs assessment. Um and then, once we have kind of put together our our goals and policies, there's another really important um step in the process of implementation. That's where the the goals and policies kind of feed into um the city. City actions. So um that would be like. Or other planning activities like adopting, you know, sub-area plans or city programs. Or regulations which really translate down into development permits and ultimately impact impact what kind of development happens. Um then our capital budget decisions about like our capital facility projects or other like transportation infrastructure improvements. And so those those elements are really broken down into these different components. Um there's a vision which is kind of our general statement about like where we wanna go. Where is this plan taking us? It's kind of a a really high level objective statement. And then our goals are more specific objectives of how we're gonna further that vision. Um and then those goals then have corresponding policies which are strategies on how we're gonna achieve those objectives. And then implementation actions are those specific actions that we're gonna take um for um to realize those goals and policies. And again, those are like our zoning and development codes, our capital budget decisions and our programs. One of the really important things i- that we'll be looking at through our complan periodic review is the planning horizon. This is a rolling twenty year period um that the plan is kind of looking at um in terms of what growth is it gonna be expected. Uh the next planning horizon for the comprehensive plan that we'll be adopting with the periodic review is twenty twenty four to twenty forty four. And in that in that planning horizon, we also have certain growth targets that are uh agreed to. Um through a regional and countywide planning possi- uh process. So for our twenty forty four growth targets, we're looking at um one thousand two hundred and thirty nine new dwelling units by twenty forty four. And thirteen hundred new jobs. And one of the um kind of key things here is that this is really not a um. The housing growth target hasn't really changed from the previous target, so it's not increasing. And then the the employment growth target is um increasing uh fairly marginally. Um so one of the added benefits of that is that we don't. It kind of allows us to have a narrower scope on our comprehensive plan. And we can focus on other things other than like kind of large-scale rezones to accommodate a much higher growth target. One of the ways that we understand, so we have our growth targets of that's how many housing units and how many jobs we expect to have in the um. In the twenty year period. There's also the question of capacity and we have to provide enough development capacity to accommodate that projected growth. And the way that we understand that is through the Urban Growth Capacity Report, which is a report that was conducted by King County in twenty twenty one. It really looks at like uh how much developable land is there in the urban growth areas throughout the county? And how much development is possible on those developable lands? Um and it considers things like our existing development, environmental factors and constraints like wetlands and other critical areas. The achieved density that we've seen um in recent history, the zoning in those lands and then obviously whether or not the land is developable or redevelopable. Um the findings of the Urban Growth Capacity Report are that we have a capacity for sixteen hundred and seven additional dwelling units. So we have a little more capacity than we have um than we have for our growth target. And then for employment capacity, we have capacity for nine hundred and sixty one additional jobs. Now, the key thing here is that the Urban Growth Capacity Report looks through the year twenty thirty nine. Um and when you kind of extend that through twenty forty four, this um this capacity number is is enough to accommodate our forecasting growth in jobs. So we don't have a we don't have a capacity deficit in either housing or employment um capacity. One of the things that's um that comes up frequently is whether or not we're achieving our housing growth target. And so this chart here shows the um the orange line is kind of a flat year-over-year um growth towards our growth target. So that's that's the growth target. Um if we were completely in line with that, we would be achieving our growth target by the year twenty thirty five. And then the blue line is our achieved development um in terms of housing unit numbers. And so you can see along here, the kind of jumps every couple of years are like those larger town center projects. Um but generally, we're we're tracking with our uh growth target um through the last few years. Um so as we're thinking about growth and thinking about um what options we have with the comprehensive plan, there are some, there are some tools that in our tool belt that we have. Some of the larger kind of um larger mechanisms that we have available to us are rezones and adoption of sub-area plans. Um neither of those two things are really proposed to take place during the next periodic review. Those are kind of larger um. Larger levers than we'll need because our our growth targets are staying relatively the same. Um some other things that we can look at in terms of housing are like the middle housing forms. Um so those are things like townhomes, cottages, ADUs, duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes. Um and then we also have a kind of a whole raft of levers and dials that are available, um tax exemptions. Um utilities connection charges, our process review process and fees. Um the development regulations and our design standards and those other like city capital projects. So before I get into the um periodic review, um scope and schedule, are there any questions about the existing complaint?
Adam, can I uh? I just wanna re-articulate this based on what you s- what you presented with the numbers. Uh i- am I to understand or conclude? And from that, you may get into this uh when it comes to scope and and all of that, but it appears that the. Projected capacity that we are being held accountable to, if you wanna use that language. Through twenty forty four, based on the needs assessment numbers that King County provided. It appears that the existing zoning and infrastructure and all the other things that we have in place essentially meet that. And so there's no. There's no numeric uh necessity to actually make any drastic change to the current plan. Is that what I'm understanding from the way that that was presented?
Yes, yeah. So when the when the county does the Urban Growth Capacity Report. One of the things that they will, if they find that a jurisdiction has doesn't have enough capacity, they'll recommend certain changes to. Um or reasonable measures to accommodate that growth. And we aren't, the city of Mercer Island will not be subject to those um or be required to make those changes. So. We're we're uh in terms of capacity, we're we're in a good place um in that in that regard.
Great. Adam, I'm I'm looking at the existing comprehensive plan off, you know, on side here. Because I was that same detail uh piqued my interest as well. I'm stunned that. Analysis shows that we have that kind of capacity. And I'm dying to know how how that conclusion was reached. So it's, if nothing else, it's just personal curiosity, where would I be able to find the study that shows that we have?
Capacity. So you'll wanna look for, I I think I included it in the in the staff report. I think I included a link, but I'll I'll send out another one. There's the Urban Growth Capacity Report from King County. And a lot of our development capacity is in town center um for residential. And there's also a fair amount of capacity in redevelopable land, I think. Um so those are, that's like. Something that has a building on it, but it's zoned for more development or there's more development possible than what's there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there is capacity. I this the number was so high. I was like, wow, really? Uh so thank you all.
So the the nuance I wanna add. So first, I've been through this process a couple of times now in different jurisdictions. And I think the thing that is important to understand about those targets is that doesn't mean that that's what we have to build. And likely will not build in that timeframe, but it's, for example, we have. Areas in the town center zone for three stories, but they're currently uh. A- and and at three stories, there's an estimated number of units that would fit into that um. At full development, how much could go in there? Today, there's a one-story building that may, by the way, never redevelop in the next twenty years, right? So but we get credit for that saying that, hey, we would allow it if it happened, if the market demanded it. Um and so it's it's a very weird formula. In that, um I think it scares people in thinking that all of a sudden we're gonna have another sixteen hundred. Units when in reality, it's just a equation of showing. You know, what's what's what if a- at a total, if we were to build every unit that could potentially be built under the current zoning. That's what we could build. The market forces and the reality of that will be far from. That full potential. Yes, any other is any other questions on the second area? Sorry, Adam. Any other questions for Adam on the second section? Okay, sorry, Adam.
Yeah, no, no, no worries. Um it's getting late. Um so. Next, we'll we'll take a look at our um periodic review, um the scope of work, our um schedule and the public participation plan. Um we're asking for some comments on. Um just some notes on kind of the overall project um outlook for this. Um the for our periodic review, our our project management will be completed in-house. Um so some jurisdictions will like uh contract out somebody else to do their um project, but we're we're managing it here in-house. Um and that will really involve um, you know, so staff work from um. The deputy director, me, the senior planner and the economic development coordinator. Um kind of throughout the project. And so it's gonna be a pretty major undertaking for the three of us um throughout the project. Um it will also involve some other city staff um like the city engineer um to kind of provide some of that feedback on. Or some of the work on like our capital facilities inventory or transportation element. Um and then we're also gonna be working with Arch, um which is a regional coalition on housing. Um and they're gonna provide some s- some assistance with our housing needs assessment and our housing element. Um the council has appropriated some funds for some other contractor work. Um so we have about thirty thousand uh for housing needs assessment um that was appropriated in the last budget. Um our and then for the rest of our periodic review, we also have um one hundred and fifty thousand um appropriated. Um for other support services. And this is gonna include some help with our economic development element. Um kind of providing some data analysis for that. Um our transportation element um working on that. Um some of the environmental review documentation, so um probably contract out our CIPA determination. Um the outreach and our public outreach and peer review. Um and then also some document editing and production. So we've got, it'll be kind of a joint effort with city staff and some of our consultants. So um the first document that we're um that we're asking or we're asking for your comments on all three of the documents, the scope of work, the schedule and then ma- the public participation plan. I said there were three documents. It's two documents, sorry. The scope of work and master schedule are one document. And the public participation plan is an is a separate document. We're asking for you to individually provide your comments by March first. Um and. When you're when you're making your comments, we do ask that you um, you know, if you're, if you can identify like what you're. Kind of specifically what you're asking for to either be added or removed. Um and then if you can include the corresponding um page and line numbers in in the document title, um that would be really helpful. And we're gonna take those those um requests and those comments and put them together and provide them to the city council. For their consideration on March fifteenth as they consider um kind of setting the final scope um for this project. So to start with, um there's the scope of work. Um and so the scope of work is really, we're calling this kind of a surgical approach because we're keeping a fairly narrow um scope of work. Um for the update, um because we assume that the the plan is kind of generally working, that it's it seems to be, we. Um kind of achieving most of its goals. Um and really, we're focused just on the updates that are required by the Growth Management Act. Um so those all kind of fall under the minor surgery heading here. So those are like updates to our land use, capital facilities, utilities and transportation elements. Um because those are gonna be pretty minor, um just focusing on extending that planning horizon. Um and then the major surgery, these are kind of things that are above and beyond this kind of surgical approach. Um is adopting a new economic development element. And then also the update to the housing element um to respond to that housing needs assessment. So those two uh projects kind of have a a larger, broader scope. And you'll see when you look through the public participation plan to the the economic development element and the housing element update. Um both have kind of the the broadest uh public participation uh. Involved with it as well.
It looks like we have a question from Victor real quick.
Alright, can you go back a slide? So. Uh so we, so the slides, the title says it's the scope of work, master schedule and public participation plan. I see a request from the planning commission for questions and comments. I see that it's in front of the council, but where's the public participation part of this? Where does that come in?
The public participation is um bringing this to you and then bringing it to the council as well. And the public can comment on the scope of work and um all three of these uh things. Currently, it's a very.
I would just say, we'll talk a little bit more about it later, but we've already um launched a let's talk webpage for this project with a comment portal. So I would encourage folks from the public if they would like to comment on the scope or schedule or participation plan to go there and submit comments. Um they can also always email Adam and I. Happy to take it that way. Um. But yeah, we're open for comments here the next couple of weeks. Um and this will be going back to council for their final approval in March. So I think now is the time for both the council and planning commission as well as the public to give us feedback.
But it's just the plan for the plan, right? Like this is just, the comments are just on the plan, not on. The actual engagement, like.
Yeah.
The comments are.
The public participation plan and the outreach and workshops and all of that, that's planned over the next two years. There's a lot of opportunities for people to be involved.
Got it. And and that's where public hearings happen and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Right, we'll keep rolling here. Um. So um as you're as you're reviewing or reading through the scope of work. Um there's there's staff recommended kind of ele- element-specific tasks in table two of the scope of work. Um and you can you can propose adding or subtracting those tasks that are labeled as local choices um in that table. Um and basically, the the ones that are required, they're required, so we don't have a lot of discretion in those. Um but if you think that there's a high priority policy issue that maybe wasn't included in that um in that table. Um you can recommend that it be um added to the list. And then if you think that there's something on there that's a low priority issue, you can make that known in your comment as well. Um so that's that's kind of the where where you can focus your comments um on the scope of work. Um that's probably the most useful spot to uh focus there. Then um we also included a schedule. Um the the overall schedule for the plan or for the project is we we expect adoption by um April of twenty twenty four. And that gives us some time to file the um the project um with the necessary state and county agencies. Um then in the following month of May, um I didn't mention this earlier, but the um. The state deadline for um finishing the periodic review is June, is the end of June twenty twenty four. So some of the other kind of points on the um. On the schedule here is the technical reports. We're we're kind of expecting to get a lot of those finished, the housing needs assessment and economic analysis. And our transportation inventory and forecast, we expect to get those kind of wrapped up by this July. Um and then um the capital facilities and utilities inventory um by um next year. See, there's another hand up.
Yeah. So that economic analysis is a component of the economic element. It's not the entire economic element, is it?
Correct. It's, it's a technical report that's going to be data analysis that gives us some kind of baseline understanding of like these things that we anecdotally hear about all the time. It'll, it'll help us understand some of those, like what's going on in the market kind of at large.
Who's doing the, who's doing the economic analysis?
We are talking with a consultant to do that economic analysis, but we don't have anybody under contract yet. Anybody else? No. I'll keep rolling here. So the public participation plan, there are some kind of key components that we'll be doing kind of throughout the whole project. We, as Alison mentioned, we have a let's talk page set up. So that's a dedicated project webpage that allows folks to see current drafts of documents, make comments and contact staff with questions. And all of this will kind of help us with our continuous public and getting continuous public input throughout the whole project. We also have a dedicated email address for folks to send in their comments. So we can kind of centrally collect our, our comments. And what we're planning on doing is having a, a community workshop on the overall plan update prior to a public hearing, but kind of later in the process. So we can kind of get some feedback on how on target we are on some of these on the update, but outside of the kind of formal public hearing process that's maybe not as useful to get everybody involved. And then we will have public hearings with the planning commission and the city council prior to adoption. There are some places where we have some expanded public participation that you'll see in the public participation plan. We're planning on having an economic development and housing work group. And these would be special advisory work groups that would be composed of two council members and two planning commission members. And they'd meet similar semi regularly through the update to kind of look at the economic development element and the housing element and some of those amendments that are being proposed prior to those two things coming to the planning commission. So they'll kind of consider and put together those first graphs that will then get kind of refined through the planning commission process. Another, so some other things from our public participation plan. For those things that are kind of minor, what we're terming minor surgery, the the more technical updates, the public participation is primarily focused on the planning commission and city council meetings and those comment periods associated with them. Again, these are kind of more, there's a little less leeway in what we're adopting there. They're really technical in nature. But then for those things that we're calling major surgery, the economic development element and the housing element. We have kind of expanded public participation plan, public participation planned for those things. And that will include two community workshops and those work groups. We're also planning on doing a survey about economic development kind of early in the process to help us understand, kind of set the agenda for what we're, what we're what we're addressing with the economic development element.
Adam, you in the previous thing said that we're also adding a parks and recreation element. Are those under that major surgery? Or are you going to talk about those in another point?
So I'm glad you asked because I, I glossed over it earlier. So the parks and recreation element is going to primarily be a dynamic reference to the parks, recreation and open space plan. And probably won't have, because we've already kind of done that planning work. I, I, we're not expecting to do anything beyond just creating that dynamic reference. And one of the advantages there is that then we can keep the pros plan up to date. And it's not necessarily entrenched in the comprehensive plan.
And the, the parks and recreation can, commission, they're the ones that are lead, lead agent on, on that plan, if I'm correct, right?
Yeah, yeah. And it's going through a pretty large public process before getting adopted sometime later this year.
Great. Yeah, I just want to make sure that was clear that that was or wasn't as a part of our, because there are, especially when you talk about, I guess that was parks and recreation, the open space portion, I think does hit some of the land use stuff. But if it's not a part of that, then. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
True. So as you're looking through the public participation plan, I think the, where you can kind of focus your comments would be on page three of the public participation plan, where we list the goals and tasks for public participation. And those, those changes should kind of reflect whether or not you think that we need to expand or reduce those public participation activities. So again, like if there's kind of a high priority issue that you think needs to get kind of some extra public feedback, you could highlight it in your comment. And that's again on page three of the public participation plan. So kind of looking ahead at the next steps. So we have our briefing tonight. We're asking for your comments by March 1st. And then I'll put those comments together and provide them to the council for their consideration on March 15th. Also kind of in, in between there, the council is going to consider ratification of our King County, countywide planning policies on March 1st. So that's comp plan related, because that's where those growth targets are set. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions you have now.
So Adam, just to be clear around the comments from the commission, obviously the commission could make some now. Is the intent here that folks could continue to review that and send comments to staff between now and March 1st, that it's not necessarily to have a full compendium of comments by the end of tonight.
Right, yeah. We wanted to give you some time to read through it. And then also, you know, you can, everybody can kind of share their, their ideas. And I'll put them together. I've got like a comment matrix. So the, the council can see kind of what everybody has recommended or proposed. And then make their decision about the scope and public participation plan.
Okay, Tiffen?
Thanks. So is it question time now?
Yeah.
Okay, wonderful. So I, I have a background in like transportation planning. So I used to write transportation elements. And one of my questions is sort of related to the bike and ped plan. I've noticed if it's not kind of incorporated at the same time you do the broader outreach for the comp plan, it tends to not just doesn't kind of get implemented and have the same weight and the same amount of public participation. So I kind of wanted to know how you're dealing with this, if there's flexibility in that. I, I notice it's listed in the, adopting it in the scope by reference, but there wasn't kind of talk about doing public outreach to it more broadly.
Well, so the public outreach though, that would, that would precede any kind of like update to the plan. Right? The bike and ped plan. And what we're, what we're proposing in the scope is that we adopt the plan by reference. And then we have an optional add a policy that requires a regular update of some sort of the bike and ped plan. And so were that policy to be adopted, then we would regularly update that. And when we regularly update the bike and ped plan, that's when we would do the public participation.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is it's pretty old right now and it desperately needs updated. Why don't we just update it while we're doing this whole thing?
That would be a great comment to let the council know, yeah, that you want to do that.
Okay, I mean, I'll send in a comment, but I'm like, it just seems to make so much sense when you're already launching this huge public outreach effort to just roll it into there. And I mean, I know we have a lot of groups, you know, within the community that are also anxious to work on that. And then my other comment, which I can put in writing too, is just related to the way the town center. You know, like when the town center code was last updated, it was more or less also copied into the comprehensive plan. And you know, it, it seems to me that the, more like the specific standards and figures should probably be pulled out of the comprehensive plan and just the policy should remain. Because then you're not going to have this kind of difficulty when you go to update that. And we haven't done a ton of, ton of updates, so it hasn't been a huge issue so far. But I think one of my comments for consideration would be to, you know, modify the town center element in the comprehensive plan to be more policy oriented and to have more of the standards to be kept in the code.
Almost in a reference in the same way that parks and open space plan is.
Yeah, and you know, that, that would be almost like a, I don't know how I'd say it, but that's almost like an issue you have to look in for internal consistency, because right, if you have, it, it's just something you have to look into. So you can just not have difficulty with internal consistency. Because I don't think our code generally speaking is in the comp plan. But I think you did say some standards were going in. So I, I guess I'm putting that out as a comment, but I haven't worked out all the details in my head how that should be implemented.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Adam, suggestions for now? Okay, I'll just make the statement again that Adam, correct, based on what you have here on the screen, March 1st. If you do want to go back and spend the time to review the details of this, if you've been unable to do that so far, please get your comments to, I'm assuming Adam, they should just send them to you or?
Yeah. And, and I'm available too, if you have questions as you're going through that, like feel free to reach out and we, we can look at stuff if you need to.
Great. Okay, well, thank you very much, Adam, for the overview. And I know this is going to be a long, protract, two-year experience for everyone. It's, it's so thrilling. Great. With that, is that all you have? Fantastic. We'll go ahead and move to item number seven, Alison, the deputy director's report.
I really don't have anything to report out on. I guess the only thing to say is the, the lighting code amendment that you all recommended is going to council March 1st. And so they'll be making a decision on that here in the next month or so. And then the two items that you made recommendations on tonight will also be going back to council here shortly. And Commissioner Boatsman had asked me to kind of report back on progress on, on things as they work their way through the process. So I'm going to be trying to, trying to do that here during the deputy director's report at the meeting. And just kind of give you updates on, on what happens at city council with each of those things. If you've got any requests about kind of the, the format or the type of information you'd like to see there, feel free to let me know. Other than that, I guess our next meeting is March 23rd. And let's see, I'm blanking on what's our plan for that meeting at the moment. I think we're doing our first work session on what we've been calling the state mandated code amendments. So over a year ago, the state legislature passed a couple of bills that required us to do some code amendments related to housing and homeless shelters, transitional housing and, and some things related to that. So the city council adopted an interim ordinance back in September to comply with those requirements. There was a deadline to comply by the end of September. So we quickly put in place some interim regulations, but we knew there was some, some things there that we hadn't given much consideration to. And we wanted to dig into a little deeper with some more staff work. So we're, we're doing that now. And we'll be coming back to you all with that work session in March and, and looking to adopt permanent regulations here later this spring. So I guess that's my update on, on where we've been and where we're going.
Great. Thank you very much, Alison. As Alison mentioned, our next meeting will be March the 23rd. Double check if everyone has that on their calendar. Has anybody known that they're going to be absent that week? Okay, if anything comes up between now and then, please let Alison know. Alison, what's the timeline for the council considering a replacement of, were they going to try to do?
They actually just did a recruitment process. And I saw an email from Andrea that there's four applicants for the planning commission. And I believe the council will be reviewing those. I'm not sure if it's the March 1st meeting or the one after that, but here shortly they'll be appointing someone. And we'll let you all know when that happens and, and who will be joining the commission.
Cool. So it's possible we could even have someone for next meeting?
Yeah, if they, yeah, I guess they'll either be appointing them like the first or the 15th. So I think it's likely that someone will be appointed by the time we meet next. You know, whether or not they'll actually be available for the meeting, we'll have to see, but hopefully, hopefully they can be.
Great. Thank you very much for that update. So with that, are there any other announcements or communications from the commission that they would like to make? Great. Well, hearing none, we will see you all on March the 23rd. Thank you very much. And have an enjoyable next month. And if you can hold on the line until Lori can close the meeting, thank you very much. And it is now nine 29 and this meeting is concluded. Thank you.
Thanks all.